This meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 6:35, 6:05, sorry, PM, Tuesday, November 13th, 2018, in room 137 of the Edison Building. Present at the board table is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of Schools, and a non-voting ex officio member of the board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, the Assistant Board Clerk. Ms. Edgar, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Barlow.
Here.
Mrs. Bethan.
Here.
Chair Marvin.
Here.
Mr. Sussman.
Here.
Ms. Seeling.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Workman.
Here.
Let's stand as we are able for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. 2.01, approval of agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, item 3.05, Minnesota Energy Resource Rebate has been removed. The individual that was coming with our check was sick today. And item 7.04, approval of audit report for the 2017-18 fiscal year has been removed. They're not quite done with the report. There's still a couple of little things they need to do to finalize the report, but that will be brought back at our next meeting.
Motion to approve.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the, excuse me, agenda. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion passes. 3.01, American Education Week. Mr. Agenda, Mr. Munoz.
November 12th through the 16th marks the National Education Association 97th Annual Celebration of American Education Week. American Education Week is a chance to celebrate public schools and recognize the valuable work of all of those who contribute to the children's education. Public schools are the cornerstones of the communities they serve, welcoming students from all backgrounds and all abilities. The success of those schools depends on everyone who pays, plays a part. That includes educators, support professionals, parents and families, and the work that we do with the community members. So at this time, I think I will pull up a video that we created to recognize this week.
Again, thank you for all of our staff and parents and community members for everything they do to support and educate our children every day. Thank you.
3.02, recognitions. Are you going to stay there? No?
Which is this one?
Chris is doing this one. This is ACT.
Oh, Chris.
Sorry.
At this time, I'm going to call Chris Fogarty, Principal at Century High School, and he's going to announce ACT perfect scores from his school, and then he's subbing in for Mayo High School, who is, has another commitment at this time.
Thank you, Superintendent Munoz, Assistant Board Clerk Wendy Edgar. Good to see you. Members of our school board, it is certainly an honor to recognize our students here from Rochester Public Schools, Century Panthers, and also Mayo Spartans. So those students in attendance, please join me. Yeah, you can just come on, stand up up here, please, and then line up. This is a commitment to our students' academic drive, their growth mindset, attention detail, attention to details, and just striving for excellence that we see here. In attendance here from Mayo High School, and I apologize, I don't know you, but I'm happy to step in to help out here, so please wave or say hi. Our first student from Mayo High School is Donal Koosh, Clara Shu, Leah Folp, Leah's not here, Alice Yang, Sandhya Kumar, and Marcus Yao. Congratulations on your accomplishments with the ACT. From Century High School, we did have on here that Isaac Markwart received a perfect score, which he did, but he's a class of 2018, so I just wanted to note that. And then Helen Jin Lee, who is the daughter of Fang Jin, who is not able to attend tonight. But those from Century that are in attendance are Tracy Zhang. She is the daughter of Gui Zhang and Min Wong, Pranav Avula, he's the son of Vijaya Reddy, and An Rudha Avula, Michelle Mai, she is the daughter of Ming Mai, and Li Shuen Wong. So congratulations to all your, to these students, and nothing but the best as you move forward with your education. Congratulations.
Now, before you go, turn around so your parents can take a picture of you. And if we could have the parents that are here tonight, if you could stand, because you had a lot to do with this as well. Okay, this is the, this month, the month of October's Above and Beyond winners, and at this time, I want to read a few examples. The first one was for Suzie Morris. She works at Century High School. Suzie is taking on doing morning announcements with her yearbook students, which has greatly enhanced communication at Century. This is way, this is way above and beyond the requirements of yearbook, but she inspires her kids to take ownership for this and then communicates it to staff daily. This has been a game changer, and we are so fortunate to have her doing this service. The next one is Ari Foster from Jefferson Elementary. Ari excels in every aspect of her job, working with students. She's always kids first. Ari comes prepared to school each day, excited to share it with her coworkers and the students in her classroom. She jumps in to help with every challenging behaviors at a moment's notice. Next one is Denny Paulson from Hoover Elementary and Early Learning School. This one is from Connie, the early childhood principal. Denny has provided endless hours of support and planning during the creation, building, and occupation of our new Hoover building and early learning school. He always has a smile on his face, uses a warm voice, and stands ready to help any staff member or child in need. Thank you, Denny. Denny also received a recognition from Sean at Hoover. The construction project at Hoover was a large one to organize. Denny was calm and cool through the entire project and had answers to every question he was asked. I was grateful to have Denny there running the project. So thank you to all of those who were recognized this month. At this time, I'm going to have Melissa come up and do the drawing.
This is one of my most fun parts about being president of Rochester Public School Foundation, is the opportunity to recognize staff members for a job well done. You can't draw because you're in the list. Erin Raymond from Freddo, or from Riverside now. I knew her from Freddo. Oh, and she gets a $25 gift card from Pasquale's Pizza.
Next is 3.04, Equity Update. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time, I'm going to invite Jared, Bishop Elementary Principal, and I'll let him introduce a couple of staff that he's brought with him. Just before they start, just a reminder to the board, I think I gave you this as one of, during one of the updates. This year, we had each site create an equity action plan, and we will be sharing those at our monthly leadership meetings. Actually, we have a leadership meeting tomorrow, and we have three schools ready to present. But we, during our site presentation plan, the cabinet went out, and we're really impressed with their plan, so we thought we would have them share it with the board.
Well, thank you, Superintendent Munoz, Clerk Edgar, and school board members. Thank you for allowing us to share a little bit on our journey towards excellence for all of our students and provide an update on a couple of key pieces that we're working on at Bishop Elementary. With me tonight, I have Sierra Lindfor, who's a second grade teacher, and Megan Hansen, who's a fourth grade teacher. And we're really going to highlight two key pieces of our, of our plan tonight. Our, our goal this year is 100% student-focused and equity-focused for all kids. And, and our goal as a building is that all of our students will have their unique needs known, celebrated, and met. If we can get there, we're doing the right things by kids every single day. And, and there's four theories that we're working behind that are helping us kind of propel towards that. I'm not going to read them verbatim, but basically, at the, at the gist of them is, if we examine ourselves and our biases and those experiences, we can validate and affirm our students. If we utilize culturally and linguistically our CLR, CLRT instructional strategies, we know that we can reach our students. Trauma has an impact on our students, and if we understand and examine that impact, then the relationships that we form are stronger and deeper with our students. And if we engage parents, we're, we're moving in the right direction to understand school culture, home culture, and validate the, the home culture and support our students at school as well. So two key pieces that we're going to share about tonight is the CLR, or Culturally and Linguistically Responsive Summer Institute, that Sierra and Megan attended, as well as the social-emotional learning curriculum that we're implementing called Second Step in our classroom. So I'm going to turn it over to them.
Fantastic. I'm here first to talk about our CLR Summer Institute. We attended the CLR II Summer Institute, and Megan will be telling you a little bit about that. But the why, why this work is so important to us at Bishop Elementary, we believe that if we as a staff understand our experiences, the impact of those experiences, and know our biases, then we can better validate and affirm where our students are coming from. If we utilize culturally and linguistically responsive instructional strategies, then we better reach our students to meet their unique individual needs. And we, we kind of came to this as we sat down as a leadership team back in August, and we really looked at our data, and we said, you know, 54%, this, we did a panorama study just recently, and we based some of it off of an exit survey of fifth grade students last year. But this really struck us, is 54% of Bishop third through fifth graders reported that people at school understand them as a person completely or quite a bit. While that's wonderful that half of our students feel, half of our students need to be known and, and don't feel that they are yet, which is why we value this work so much.
So the CLR Summer Institute II was up at Oakdale, or up in Oakdale, excuse me, and it was a four-day learning that we were able to go to. And it was really a focus around the mindset and the skill set. Our focus during those four days was the area of a refresher to say, in what culture is and what our own personal culture is, looking back at the rings of culture. And so really diving into that and refocusing ourselves. And then the last three days were where we took a piece and looked into the academic vocabulary and the responsive vocabulary, or excuse me, the responsive practices that we have within our literacy, and, and taking a deeper look within that piece.
So now, we're just going to kind of share how, attending this conference and, and exploring more in the cohort. So we were in the first round of the cohort that went through Bishop last year, and now this year, we have, we're fortunate enough to have a second cohort going through as well. We-
So that's part of the district professional development. I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of that.
Yep. We were really able to dive further in. So when they came in and they observed us, we, we get observed and coached one-on-one, which is an excellent opportunity to really reflect and delve deep into our practice. When you, they kind of score you on where you are, and then based on that, you can either go to the CLR I, which is more of really diving into the mindset and the theory behind it. And then the CLR II is, okay, so what do you do with that? And doing the academic piece and the literacy piece like Megan was talking about. And it really allowed us time to reflect with many schools from the cities that are already implementing this work, and, and to bounce ideas off of colleagues and how to work and, you know, how to tie things into kindergarten and fifth grade and all, all of those different areas. But what it's really done for me as an educator is it's really challenged me to be intentional about my activities, to facilitate activities that are engaging and that kind of meet each individual student and allow an increase in student voice and choice in my room.
I would also say that the training has allowed it to become more natural for me. So last year, going through and having coaching with that, I was able to kind of watch myself grow as a learner myself and implementing it within my classroom, and I felt really good about that. But then by being able to go to the Summer Institute this summer and dive in deeper, you're looking into the literacy piece, looking into the vocabulary piece, I felt like I had more tools, because the way that they presented was through the use of the protocols that they're trying to teach us to use in the classroom. And so I got to see them in action, which is so much easier and easier to implement when you can actually see it in action and then try it out, because they also had hands-on opportunities for us. And so it became natural. So now, when I sit down and plan, there are things that I know I am good at, my kids know, and so I feel more confident to try some of the harder protocols, more in-depth ones, that are going to benefit my students. I also know that now I am intentional with my practices. I always knew what PSYOP was, and I knew how to implement it in my classroom, but I don't know that I did it really intentionally. Now I know my students. I know who they are. They're starting to know who they are as learners as well. When I say, I am doing this for these learners, we need to have moment of silence right now, because I have students in my classroom that need quiet thinking time. They know who they are. They know I'm validating them as a learner, and I know I'm taking care of their needs as well.
And I think one of the most impactful things when we're looking at that, that literacy instruction, is there's been opportunities now, you know, we analyzed, oh, it was fire protection, we, fire safety, and we were looking at an article about fire safety and what it used to be and comparing it to what it is now. And instead of just, you know, giving it to them and reading it and having, you know, I was able to draw from those strategies that we learned about, and, you know, they went through and they coded the text, and then they had conversation about it, and then they did kind of some deep article analysis. And I kind of just sat back and went, well, I guess I'm just watching you. I mean, and that's, I'm moving from a direct teacher to a facilitator, and I'm letting them take charge of their learning. So that's one of the really powerful things about the CLR.
Yeah, I have to agree with that piece, that I do sometimes feel bad when Mr. Greeler walks into the room, and I feel like I'm standing to the side a little bit, but it's because they're really in control of their learning now. But the other thing that I want to talk about is the sense of community that these protocols allow us to provide in our classroom, because we start to get to know our kids, and they get to know each other more. I think it also, because of the sense of community that we have, it creates a comfort level, a trust level within there that you have with a, a community. And with that, you start seeing kids, you're, you're quieter, you're, you're unsure kids, starting to take risk. For instance, in my room, I tried something called jump-in reading, where you get to jump in wherever you're ready within the reading, and you can read as long as you want, or you can drop off after a sentence, but you're in control of that, and we're all reading the same thing, having the same piece in front of us. And I've seen kids that are unsure, that are not grade-level readers, jump in and read, because they're confident in their classroom.
Well, building off of that sense of community, another thing that Megan and I have really got an opportunity to dive into is Second Step, and that's social-emotional learning piece. So last year, Rochester Public Schools hosted the Midwest Trauma and Form Schools Conference, and we were fortunate to be able to go, and it was such an eye-opening experience for us as teachers. And we remember, you know, looking back, and we, we know, you know, we need to teach kids, especially in early elementary, you know, we need to teach kids. But as we sat there and we looked, you know, we have these multi-tiered systems of supports and things that we should provide all students, and we started to recognize that we had some holes that we weren't filling at Bishop. And so we realized that we were not explicitly teaching kids how to act and how to behave. And we thought, it was one of the powerful things that they said, is that we teach kids how to read, and we teach them how to math, how to do math, and they come to school, and we just expect them to know how to function in a school setting. And we need to teach those skills of empathy and soft skills and collaboration and, and compassion and kindness and emotion management. And so that really became a passion area for us. Some data that we were able to look at, 57% of Bishop students, grade three through five, can almost always or frequently control their emotions. So about half of our students still are struggling to identify or deal with their emotions. 41% of students can extremely clearly or quite clearly describe their feelings. And then 52% of Bishop students feel that students show them a tremendous amount of respect, or quite a bit of respect. And so there's some growth areas for us that implementing a curriculum that is targeted towards social-emotional learning and making time for that intentionally out of our day, that this can provide it. And what's great is it's a tier one. It is for all kids. It is no longer just our special education students that are receiving social skills. No, it's all kids. It's all of our jobs. And it's not, by implementing this, we're not taking it from, it's, it's not a school social worker or a school counselor coming in. It's us.
Okay. So what is Second Step? It is a research-based, social-emotional learning curriculum. Second Step says that they are going to help with school success, school connectedness, and safe, respectful school climate by directly teaching skills for learning empathy, emotional management, and problem solving, sorry, and skills for learning. And so no matter if you are in kindergarten or if you're in fourth grade, you're going to be learning those four skill areas. Now, obviously, the, the lessons are slightly different at each level, but what's beautiful about it is that there is that spiral curriculum, essentially, because they keep getting it. If they're starting in kindergarten, they're going to keep hearing that. What's great is because we were able to try it out last year, we would come down to each other and like, oh, my gosh, I'm doing empathy right now, too. So we literally can see how that is happening in our classrooms, and that it's coming up, and that they'll get to see it again down the road. We are currently having this implemented at K through four at Bishop. It has weekly lessons. I can speak to fourth grade, and if you want to jump in with second grade. But Monday, we do our core lesson. My core lesson in fourth grade takes roughly 45 to an hour. I know that seems like a lot of time, however, that time spent buys me time later on in the week, because we now have common vocabulary. We know what our skill is for the week. We now have ways to handle things. When a situation arises, I can now talk about empathy, and it kind of quickens things up. Then Tuesday through Friday, we have mini lessons that we can choose to do. There are things that are about 10 minutes, five to 10 minutes long. There's sometimes class discussions. There's activities, writing challenges. Sometimes reflective writings come up on Fridays that the kids can revisit. What also is great is, in the fourth grade, is we have a weekly homework assignment that goes out as well. And for myself, what I do to help motivate the kids to interact with their families as well, because it can be done at home with your parents, is I kind of offer a little reward. If you turn it in, great, you got credit for it. But if you have your parents sign it, then you kind of get a little extra treat from me, just to make sure that parents are involved and they know what's going on.
And speaking to that, that parent piece, you know, we, we piloted it last year, and we didn't really have the opportunity. It was a letter sent home, you know, hey, we're doing this. But this year, at Bishop, we do the Step Into Learning, which has been an awesome opportunity for us to meet with parents. And I was able to not only hand out that letter, but say, we are going to spend 15, 20 minutes per day explicitly talking about social-emotional learning skills and how we can collaborate and work and show empathy and problem solve. And the feedback I got from parents, I was surprised. It was, you know, some of them were, oh, it's about time, you know, or, or thank you for taking the time to do that, or we've had these concerns, and I'm glad that they're getting opportunities in the classroom to explore that together when they're, you know, young and building those friendships and, and really forming who they are as individuals as well. From a second grade perspective, much like Megan said, that Monday is that core lesson. It's, it's pretty scripted out. It's reflective, and that takes about 30 minutes. And then, again, it's just those check-ins. And one of the things that they brought up at the conference was that we can't afford not to do this work. And so having those opportunities to process through, build that sense of community, has been really great for our classroom and having that common language. You know, today, it was all about compassion, which worked great with World Kindness Day. And so, you know, kind of building into real world and what they're seeing and attaching meaning to what's happening. Or last week, it was respecting different preferences, and ironically, the elections were going on. And so we were able to tie in, and it made sense. It was no longer just something Mrs. Lindfor is showing you. Nope, this is something that's happening in our world, and how can we apply this? And how do grownups use this? How can we use this in our future?
I think that's huge for the students, is it really is real life, real needs, real emotions that they get to learn. Well, we were talking about perspect, or perceptions. And I said, is there any a time that you can think of where we have struggles with our perceptions on things? And every hand came up, because we have problems on our playground every day with what was perceived to have happened in a disagreement. And so now they have vocabulary. They have a common language that they can use. And when it's done throughout that whole grade level, when your kids are outside at recess or at break together, they all have that common language. I think another thing to point out that's phenomenal is that it's such easy planning. It's ready for me. I open up my binder, and I'm ready to go. I've got my lessons scripted for me. I have to run a few things at Paper Tiger. I've got videos, music videos, lessons that go along with it, so it's great.
Yep. I think, you know, as, as we kind of sat down and really talked about Second Step, Megan brought up a really good point of, can you imagine our learners in a, in a, here in a couple of years that have had explicit instruction, research-based instruction on emotion management and problem solving, these kindergartners, that when they get to fourth grade, we're not, you know, it's a tier one intervention. There's still going to be things, it's not going to be a Band-Aid and cure-all, but it's a place to start and to reach all learners and understand where they're coming from and build off their experiences.
All right. So at, at that point, that's what we have to share with you. Are there any questions or things that we can entertain?
Mr. Smith?
I just want to say thank you for your commitment and obviously your enthusiasm.
Did we get too long-winded?
No, it's good. I think that, that has to, that has to spill over to the, to the students. So thank you for your work and your willingness to continue to learn yourself.
Mr. Barlow.
I too echo Director Smith's.
I too echo Director Smith's. Thank you. Obviously you are not as old as our swimming pools. A lot of energy, enthusiasm. I only mention that because I can only imagine the impact you're having in the classroom. And, and so I commend Jared as principal to devote the professional development dollars towards these type of activities. I'm thankful that the superintendent allows this level of funding to discretionary funding to exist at the individual school level. And I think also, if I may, Shane suggests that maybe our own community focus team could benefit from maybe hearing a presentation such as this. I think this could potentially open eyes and reveal some of the great things we are doing as a district. And I would not be able to say that unless you guys, of course, were doing that. And thank you.
Mr. Schlesner?
I know this was a presentation from your school and the superintendent mentioned this is kind of a district-wide thing as well. How many elementary schools do have this going on? Is it, is it all of them? Is it just yours?
The Second Step, the social emotional. I know that it's used in pockets at other buildings. I'm not sure what widespread. I know Riverside is using it as well as when I was at Gage, we were starting to explore it as well. So I know it's being used in, in pockets at some buildings. I'm not sure widespread implementation or what it looks like.
As long, I don't think you necessarily know this. Is the long-term plan to have all of the elementary schools do this? It's kind of in a pilot mode right now?
We're in the process of creating a survey for staff to get their feedback on what we've done so far. And then there is a question on there, what's the next professional development that you would like brought to you? So I think we'll get more input that way, but later on, I'm going to talk about something that our district is fortunate to be part of and, and social emotional learning is a huge piece of, of that. So I think it's something that, the good part is they have, we have a couple of schools that have been prototyping it. We've learned that prototyping is the thing to do and make sure it works and you get the outcomes you want before you go large scale. So we may have that step pretty much completed already, but I know it is a big piece of what we'll be doing moving forward.
Great, thanks.
I have a question, especially for you two teachers. So you've got sort of intensive training on this and then how is it shared throughout the entire school and how do you support each other so that everybody can maintain the same level of passion and enthusiasm that you two have?
Are you referring to Second Step or CLR to you?
Yes, and yes.
Jared, no, just kidding. The, the CLR, so last year we were fortunate enough to, I believe, using professional development funds to go along with the middle schools that were implementing coaching cohorts. And Megan and I were members of, there was about 10 of us total that did that first initial coaching cohort. From there, we just, it was a passion area for us, for sure. And so we had the opportunity with professional development funds to go to this conference. And we had two people from our school go to the CLR one to kind of get that mindset piece. And then we went to the CLR two, which again was a little bit, but then it was mainly just the skill set and diving in and how do we attach that. We then circled back in August before school started and went, all right, how are we going to roll this out? Because it was very intensive, very high-quality training and we, we feel so passionate, we want to share that with others. So since then, we've come back, we've continued that same coaching cohort. So we continue to dive in there as well as kind of strategizing and it kind of became fundamental, I would say, in developing our goal and our leadership plan and how we're our professional development plan throughout the school year also.
Yeah, and I think when we came back in August, we sat down with Jared and then our instructional coach as well. And we sat down and looked at how, and basically created a timeline for our school year and some of our staff meetings and how we could start to roll out some of it. But we also realized, and it's within our plan, but we need to work somewhat on that hard work as well. And so we have, I shouldn't say drag our feet, but we are going slow to go fast. And so we're getting that hard work out of the way and working on that. And then we're going to start coming in and starting to share some of those skills and strategies. But Jared is doing a wonderful job of starting to use those within our staff meetings and identifying them. So the staff is kind of getting it similar to how we got it with, through observation and exposure. The other thing is, is that Mr. Greeler was able to afford us a day, Sarah and I, to get together and kind of do some planning and how we could start sharing items with our cohort from last year to help continue their progress and growth within, because they kind of were those kickers by end of last year. And so how can we continue to grow them? And so we're sharing some of the information that we got. So that would be the CLR.
As well as continuing to bounce ideas off of one another, you know, whether it's the thesaurus or the, you know, the comprehension and the literature analysis stuff and, and finding ways to tie it in. It's been really powerful in that way. And now that we have a second cohort going, that's 20 members of our staff who are making a commitment to delve further into this work, which is really exciting. And I just want to reiterate the, the fact that Megan mentioned that we are really focused on that hard work, that hard piece. It's hard to do this work if you don't understand why you're doing it. And, and being okay with discomfort and ruffling the feathers and kind of having some courageous conversations and identifying those biases within ourselves and kind of grappling with those. It's messy and it's ugly and it will take time, but that's, we're engaging in those conversations and doing that work.
I would also say too, that what we're finding as we're going around and, and the cabinets hearing the site plans is that they have a cohort of 10 and you're, you have second 10 coming because you went on your own. But they're doing a binder study and it's more than just the 10 teachers that are participating in the cohort work. There's, I think the last group we were at, there was 20 of their staff were on their own volunteering to do the binder study with the cohort. So I think that's another way that they're having that conversation amongst a larger group.
And as far as the Second Step implementation, I know you were asking how we're sharing that as well. We, so we attended the trauma, Midwest Trauma Informed Schools Conference last year and there was four of us maybe that went.
Yes.
And this year Jared was, he gracious enough to write a grant that we were able to send 12 of us to this conference, that we were all kind of getting that information as well. And that, that background, that trauma lens is fundamental when you look at just really understanding kids developmentally, what they're bringing, understanding their story and really every kid, every single kid that walks in our doors has a story. And so just empowering us to take the time, we don't, we can't afford not to take it anymore. And it has to be the classroom teacher. And so we had the, we were approached with an opportunity to pilot it last year and we said, sure, why not? The training materials were all online for it, which was really great and it was very much so a learn by doing, let's jump in. And then it was opened up as an opportunity, again, through a grant, kind of to provide, and, and we just, well, we both like to talk a lot. So, you know, we, we just talked about how great it was.
They're pretty good salespeople.
Yeah. I think, I think the other piece though, to keep it going, and like she said though, it is totally online for the training piece. It's about three hours all said and done, I think if, maybe even that. But I think we, the other thing that kind of keeps us going is that we have connected with Chris and Courtney Dykos and are working on that trauma piece with at our school. So, I mean, it keeps it in the forefront that you just have this like end goal and these different kind of steps along the way to make sure that you're sticking with it.
And, and to circle back to the very beginning, we showed you what our site plan was and there was that trauma focus. And just a few weeks ago, when we went to that conference a second time, I looked at Megan and I went, last year we were here and we were finding a bunch of holes. This year when we're here, we really feel like we are making strides. You know, we have that, at least that tier one intervention and we have a couple of those other things in place and we're looking at all of our kids and we're trying to get to know them all. And that's a much better place than when we were, were a year ago. So we had four, now we have 12 and it's just a growing movement.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
3.06 AASA, SPN Innovation and Transformational Leadership Network. Mr. Munoz.
Okay, I think I might have shared with you in one of the weekly updates that a few of us were able to make the trip to Columbus, Ohio to be part of a AASA and the Successful Practices Network, SPN, Innovation and Transformational Leadership Network. And to be honest with you, about a month ago or so, I received this email and I'm thinking, hmm, why did I get this email? But it sounded really interesting and we talked about it at cabinet. We thought, you know, this is probably something we should do. When we, we flew out on Saturday and it was, the conference was on Sunday. So when we showed up Sunday morning, we found out there was, we were one of about 14 districts, but it was an invite only. It wasn't sent out and everybody wasn't invited to be part of this network. And we were told that everybody in that room was invited because of some of the innovative things they're currently doing. The advantages of being part of this network is that they've looked at three national studies. The first one was done by CCC-SU and it's the nation's most rapidly improving schools. ASA did a national most successful innovative district study as well. And then NDPC, which looked at 11 research universities, basically looking at what is best practice for schools and for innovation and transforming education. Being part of this group, we're going to be able to connect and work with some of the very well-known educators. Bill Daggett is the main one that has everybody's attention. When you talk about education, innovation, and transformation, Bill Daggett, he's the guy. And the other gentleman, I apologize, I don't have his name, I thought I wrote it down, had done a lot of work with Bill Gates before he jumped ship and now works with Bill Daggett. Also being part of this group, and I don't remember the gentleman's name, but he's a data, like nationally known data expert. So we'll be able to interact and work with him. But it's about a two-year commitment. We get to go to the, this coming summer, we go, get to go to the Model Schools Conference where there's 24 schools that are known across the country for the most innovative, successful schools in the country. We're having an opportunity to network and work with them at that time. We also will get visits. Today, the cabinet actually sent some dates saying, dates that Bill Daggett can come to our district and meet with us and do some visiting of schools and learn more about our district. I can tell you that when we had some time to work as a team, Bill Daggett sat down at our table and was very impressed with our graduate profile and felt that what we had created is really the type of learner that we have to produce. And we're really excited, hopefully he'll be the one that visits our districts and work with us. We also have the opportunity that, hey, we just want to sit down and talk to Bill Daggett about something. We can set up a, a Skype or whatever they call that technology thing where you can talk to them wherever they're at and where we're at. So it really gives us an opportunity to interact with some very well-known educators. And one of the things that I shared with, at the executive committee is that after we attempted to fly back Sunday night, we end up getting stranded in Chicago and couldn't fly back till Monday. But we talked about the work that we are doing. I think I probably shared with you some of the extended cabinet and that's cabinet members and some other district staff have been looking at our three goals and what are the action steps and measurements we can do to accomplish those three goals. And we all decided that if the board would allow it, that we would probably hit the brakes a little bit and allow us to spend more time with being part of this network and learn more that we think that we can create better action plan and better measurements for our three goals. So that's a suggestion that we have. But I do, I do want to share a couple of things with you. One of the things that they talked about is not accepting the status quo and looking for new and better ways. Even though looking for new and better ways, well, we experienced that tonight, is uncomfortable and not easily acceptable to all people. But they really, in order to be innovative and transform your system, you really have to look at new and better ways of doing business. So, what I'd like you all to do right now, get out a writing utensil and by adding just a single line, turn this into the number eight. One consistent line. So if you could just jot it down on your note paper or whatever you have handy, if you could just make that eight using one line. Okay, everybody have your answer down? I won't make you share your answer, but most you probably did this, I assume. Added the line there to make that eight. Anybody do anything different than that? Okay. Ann?
I did, I did. Well, I thought we could make a long line.
Yeah, you can make one, you can make one solid line all you want. No, okay, that's good. All right, here's the next question on the test. By adding the single line, it could be a very long single line, just as long as you don't, you know, make two. Turn this into the number six. Okay, everybody have your answer? Anybody struggle with that one a little bit? Come on, be honest. I did when I did this. Okay? Well, here's a couple of ways that you might have been able to do it. Make the one line into an S or make the one line into a six, so one times six equals The point he was trying to tell us is in innovation is we have what they call mental block. By doing it out of order, some of us probably struggled with, how do I keep with Roman numerals on the second one? How do I do that? You get in your mindset, well, the way to solve this problem is making them Roman numerals. And because of that mental block, it doesn't allow you to think differently. And he said, it's really important that when you're coming up with solutions, that you come up with five to 10 different answers to solve the problem. Don't just jump at the first or second one because you don't, you don't allow yourself to get outside of that mental block that you have. So he said, really talked about really needing to force your brain away from your dominant thinking. We all have dominant thinking and we have to force ourselves to get beyond that to really come up with newer and better ways of doing things. And I, you know, a lot of times I get asked about education. I had a couple, I had an opportunity to speak at the NPR at one time, radio on, I think at that time it was Latino education. And one of the things I said is that if I had a magic wand and I could do this, I would just take a new school system or a school from scratch. I think what we try to do in education is we kind of chip away at things and just try little things because, I think because of our mental block, that we really don't just start completely over. And so, how do you get there? Well, they said you have to embrace prototyping and that's kind of what I was mentioning earlier, that they really encourage you to try new and better ways, but prototype it. And then if you get the outcomes that you expect, then you can know, you can scale it. Continuous improvement, you always want to get better and find new and better ways of doing things. Ensure practice shows promising results before, for your scale and you have to practice patience. And, you know, we want it to happen overnight, we want it to happen quickly, but it does take some time. So this was just a couple of activities that they took us through. I do, I want to finish up the, the day or this presentation with a little video, if I can find it on the computer. Nope, that's not it. That's not it. There it is. All right.
This is America in 1900. This is a car in 1900 and a phone and a high school. This is America in 1950 and a car and a phone and a high school. This is today, a car, a phone, a high school. Whoa, backup. So cars are now this and phones are now this, but high schools are still that? American high schools are based on the same model and it's been over 100 years.
Wow, that's a long time.
But why? In 1900, it made sense for high schools to prepare students for that. But in 2018, shouldn't they be preparing students for this, and this, and even this? So why are we still granting diplomas based on the time a student spends in a seat? Why are we still using the Carnegie Unit, which was developed in 1906 and says the formula for learning is, four years sitting at a desk multiplied by one subject taught at a time equals... Students Ready for the Future? All Questions: Execute the Superschool Project. Asked America to Help Answer. There was a competition. Not that kind of competition, this kind. The kind where communities across the country come together to rethink high school, so every student, everywhere, can be prepared for the future. And that's big, like really big. Like the largest open call in history to redesign high school big. This is the hard work that went into it. 10,000 people across the country became school builders, and thanks to them, there will be brand-new ways of teaching and learning, starting with America's first super schools.
So you kind of get the idea. Anyway, we're extremely excited to be working with Bill Daggett and others and other districts as well. We think it's going to be a great opportunity, not only to network with the other districts that are part of the network, but network with the districts that are already identified as doing best practice across the country already. So, any questions for me? All right, thank you.
Thank you. 3.02, 2017-2018 School Board Committee Assignments Update. Any board members have something they'd like to share about committee work they've done in the last couple of weeks?
I'll save all mine for the Facility Support Success Committee.
Thank you.
I have a few.
Mr. Barlow.
I'll be as brief as possible. I, along with, I'm sure, several other board members, had the opportunity to attend a great student-led event at JM a week or so ago, where students effectively communicated and delivered high-level themes, and I was very impressed and encouraged and left feeling very enthused. Additionally, had the opportunity this past weekend to attend the Southeast Minnesota Autism Symposium here in Rochester, and was introduced to a new concept to me, perhaps very familiar to others, and that is neural diversity. A concept that clearly establishes that conditions such as autism, dyslexia, and ADHD are now currently being viewed as naturally occurring cognitive variations with distinctive strengths. And I think when viewed that way, then it creates a tremendous opportunity to develop our students who may very well fit that particular pattern. And then this morning, had the opportunity to participate in 2018 STEAM Summit, which at RCTC went quite well. There were over 1,300 students from the region, fifth through eighth graders, and from both public and private schools, with over 1,000 of RPS students participating. Thought it was a great opportunity and look forward to seeing these future achievers do great things.
Thank you. Ms. Seelinger?
Some time back, since we haven't been here for a while, I attended the 2018 Minnesota Kids Count. They do a, this is by the Children's Defense Fund, this is what I got, but this is all available online. Talks about four areas, quality education, economic well-being, health, coverage, and care, and safe and supportive homes and communities. So good information can be drilled down to our area and our state. In terms of education, the things that I highlighted were increased, research demonstrates a significant effect good attendance has on, standardized test scores, graduation rates, academic achievement, et cetera. And I know we've worked on attendance in this district. And then also what we've heard before, teachers of color positively affect students of color and others. Again, back to attendance, test scores, and enrollment in advanced college courses. So good information, if you're interested, just Google or search for Kids Count and you can get that, more of that information.
Thank you. Ms. Seelinger and I, I attended the Family Engagement Committee this morning with focus on how our families are engaging with the schools and how schools are reaching out to them. One new initiative is, a number of our schools now are providing food after school for those families and young people, 18 and younger, who get hungry when they're not in school. So providing that. I also had an opportunity today to go to STEM Village at the Heinz Center, which is a learning area for our teachers, and they had all kinds of really cool technical stuff in bins and opportunities. I didn't, I don't, I was afraid to touch anything, but there are a number of other people there who are playing with these robot things and they were doing coding. It's an incredible resource for our teachers, and they have people there helping teachers become more comfortable and challenging them to bring these items into their classrooms. So that was really cool. Anybody else?
I'd just like to add on what you're saying, Jean, is that STEM Village is, is really about a lot of the materials needed for what the superintendent's presentation was on, the hands-on learning activities that are more real-world. STEM Village is all about that.
Yep, absolutely.
Unless I heard they're underutilized for what they've got to offer.
Well, they had cookies there today, so they were being utilized. Okay, 4.0, Consent Agenda. This is an action item. Anne?
I would like to remove 4.13.
Which one?
4.13, for separate consideration.
Four, I'm sorry, you said 4.13?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the agenda with the exception of 4.13?
So moved.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? I have discussion. I just want to point out that the Minnesota State High School League Foundation Grants, which is 4.15, provide funds for our high schools to make sure that kids who don't have the financial resources to participate in extracurricular activities have those funds provided. I think it's really important that we ensure that kids, all kids, can participate in extracurricular. So that was my discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 4.13, Ms. Becker.
My question is the same one that I had for the researchers about the pregnancy question, and I don't, I'm, how are the, the study population that they're, that they want to study for their mindfulness, nobody can be pregnant. And so, since we have high school students, I'm just wondering how we're, as a district, how are we going to account for that? I mean, there's no, looking at the questionnaire, there isn't anything on the questionnaire that says if you are, if you aren't. I know they talked about, you know, if students were over 18, you know, that somehow the teacher was going to have to, you know, ascertain who was, who was, who was going to be able just to not have their parents sign for them. But are we asking, again, are we asking our teachers? Are we, how are we, how are we going to do that? How are we going to assure that there's no pregnant students? But I think it's also, because isn't this also teachers doing this?
No.
Just students, yeah.
It's just for the students? Okay. I know it's like really odd, and I don't usually, I don't usually get this in the details, but to me, you know, you're, you're looking at a high school population, and to me, this is kind of, it's kind of a big deal. And I guess I was a little bit unhappy with their, with the researcher's response, like, oh, I guess we just overlooked that. And it's like, well, that, that kind of bothered me. I really like research projects. I, and I, on the face of it, I think this would, this would be a really good one, but that one little piece really, it bothers me. So if it doesn't bother anyone else, we certainly can vote on it.
Well, I, we could suggest that you'll approve it only if that piece gets removed and it's not...
And I don't know...
I don't know why. They didn't really say why that was a factor in their study.
Well, and I...
I thought they were going to eliminate it, actually, as a result of question last time.
Well, I, I looked at the information again, and I didn't see that it was eliminated. And it, if, and again, I was, you know, if Richard was here, he could maybe enlighten me a little bit better. However, if, you know, reading through, I think, the IRB approval letter, you know, if there are any changes that needed to be made, I mean, I think they needed to be made before the study started, so I, I don't, I don't know. To me, to me, I just, I, again, I like the study, I would like to say yes to the study, but I wasn't very happy with their, oh, I guess we overlooked it.
Is it possible for us to reach out to the researchers and just ask them where they are on that and then come back?
And we can bring it back.
Bring it back?
Yeah, that's fine.
Everybody else okay with that?
Sure.
Okay, we'll do that then. Thank you.
So we table that.
That one's being tabled. And we've, we voted to approve the other agenda items. Mr. Munoz.
Do we need a motion, a motion that we table that, that item?
Oh, we do?
I think, we need to have reflected in a minute.
Okay.
So I'll move.
It's been motion and seconded to table item 4.13 under the Consent Agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, I would like to recognize three retirements. Nancy Mueller, science teacher at Mayo High School, retirement effective at the end of the day, January 19th, 2019. Ms. Mueller has been with the district for 12 years. Linda Holm, coordinator of Youth and Richmond at Northrop Community Education Center, retirement effective at the end of the day, November 27th, 2018. She has been with the district 21 years. And the final one is Gary Majeris, maintenance locksmith, carpenter at Facility Service Center, retirement effective at the end of the day on January 31st, 2019. He has been with the district for 13 years. So we want to thank all three of those individuals for their service to our district.
Thank you. 5.01, Approval of Glasses for Adolescent Delayed Sleep-Wake Phase Disorder Research Study. This is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time, I'm going to invite Brenda Witchman, Executive Director of Kirkham Instruction, and I think she can introduce the doctor.
Yes, Superintendent and school board members, tonight we have Dr. Ogier from the Mayo Clinic, who has a very intriguing study. Just the title alone, I haven't told you this yet, Dr. Ogier, but we were contacted by the media today already about questions. So I'm going to let him share his research request with you at this time.
May I stand here so I can see the PowerPoint?
There's a screen here, too.
Oh, okay.
But Peter, I understand, that's fine.
Okay. I think I'll just stand, just in case, I hate to use this mouse here. So thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. My, my ultimate goal is to, is to get permission to, when I've done, I did a project in the past, actually it's been about 10 years now, where I, I was able to speak in a classroom and speak about sleep-related topics, and the added bonus for me was that I was able to recruit students for, for a study. And so, at the bare minimum, I would like permission to achieve that again in all the high schools, but any other thing I can do, get on email lists, et cetera, because recruitment is the, is the big challenge in these studies. So as I, as I kind of versed myself before these elections, I realized that this group is actually fairly aware of a lot of these issues, and my research study itself is pretty straightforward, so I'll go fairly quickly over this background information. So the National Institutes of Health, the NIH, actually recognizes adolescents as a, as a high-risk population for consequences related to sleep deprivation, and that's based upon research that correlates sleep deprivation with various aspects of learning, performance, health, and safety. And so I just want to quickly review some of the relevant developmental changes in sleep regulation for my age group of interest, which is 14 through 17. Talk about the changing sleep schedule of adolescents, that's their internal schedule. And actually, this I made for a different talk, so I think the school start times is an entirely different topic that, that very much dovetails with my own, but I won't talk about that particular topic. I want to talk about the consequences of sleep restriction among adolescents, and, and again, that last, that last bullet point, I apologize for not, for failing to remove that, but the prophylactic and proactive measures will include the, the study that I'm proposing. So this first slide is based upon, there have been a variety of studies that, done that have shown how much sleep one needs. The adolescent population, this was accomplished by a series of summer camps done at Stanford, and they, they gathered a large amount of sleep-related data, but one of the things they determined was how much sleep these adolescents needed, and they based this upon just allowing them to, to sleep at will, sleep ad lib, and determine how much they were sleeping, if they were able to awaken spontaneously. So this is a bit of a sobering piece of data here. Most adolescents, well, on average, adolescents require slightly over nine hours of sleep, and, and most, most do not get that much. And you can see that they're, that the adolescent's sleep requirement is not that much different than the sleep requirement of their middle school cohorts and even some of their elementary school cohorts. This is a very busy slide, but I could point out the salient details. This, this is data gathered, gathered from a large number of school districts in industrialized countries, and it highlights the changing sleep schedules during adolescence. Apologize for the abundance of acronyms. This is total sleep time. And what this particular row shows is that school night total sleep time, this number is minutes, and this would be the number of subjects included in the data. So you can see that school night total sleep time decreases as age progresses. This is due in large part to a later school night bedtime and a consistent school, school day rise time, which of course, that's being, that's sort of in the works, is being addressed with the school start times. The same group gets more sleep on weekends, but there still is a trend downward for weekend sleep. And again, you can see that there is a trend for later and later sleep, even later when they're allowed to sleep, according to their own preferences. And then that weekend rise time is certainly later, but relatively stable over time. So the take-home message is that school, sleep time decreases as age progresses, and this is predominantly due to a later time of sleep onset in the setting of a stable school start time. There are, of course, a variety of non-biologic factors that are keeping adolescents awake at night. Actually, I have two adolescents in my home right now. That's a, that's a different research topic entirely. But I wanted to point out that there are some biological factors that contribute to this night owl tendency in adolescents. This is one example. You can measure an individual's internal clock by melatonin, is a darkness hormone that begins to secrete about two hours before your regular bedtime, and as the night, as the night progresses, those levels begin to decrease. And if you measure when those melatonin levels, which typically, typically measured with saliva, there's a variety of ways to, to measure it, but if you measure when those levels either start to increase or start to decrease, that's the timing of your clock. So, so the later your melatonin offset time is on this x-axis, you're more of a night owl physiologically. This is a, a measure of pubertal development called Tanner Stage, and so the higher you go up on this scale, the more, the, the more developed the adolescent is. So if you draw a, a line through these data points, this is mathematically done, you can see that as pubertal development proceeds, that this internal circadian... that this internal circadian clock becomes more delayed, or the internal tendency is to be more of a night owl. You can see that in virtually all adolescents, but at its extreme, you can just call these people extreme night owls. In the clinic, we call it DSPD, or delayed sleep phase disorder. But these are, are kids that are really, really innate night owls. And there's, there's no specific time attached to this definition, but it's sort of operationalized. It's kids that fifty percent of the time would be falling asleep at midnight or later on school nights. And those are the kids that we are recruiting for this particular study. And prevalence estimates estimate that it's about seven percent of adolescents and, and young adults. I would, I see a lot of these in clinic, but usually by the time I see them, these are the very extreme cases where, actually by the time I see them, they're, they're, a lot of them are, have already moved to homeschooling or online schooling, just because of the difficulties for awakening in the morning. This is a, this is a study that's often used for the school start time arguments, but I think it would apply even doubly so for these, these night owl adolescents. This is a test that we do in, in the clinic, which measures how sleepy an individual is, so. And typically, there are four nap studies done during the day, separated by two hour, by two hours. And sleep latency is the time it takes the individual to fall asleep. This first value here of about eleven minutes would be considered normal. They look at the same group of individuals going from ninth to tenth grade, which is associated with a, about a ninety-minute earlier start time. And the amount of time to fall asleep is drastically reduced, so that with this start time, the individuals are much more sleepy objectively measured. And in fact, this, this type of value would be akin to someone with a, a serious sleep disorder such as narcolepsy. And again, those with delayed sleep phase disorder who are getting even less sleep would be, would be more, would be expected to suffer these consequences to a greater degree. As I said, as I, as I researched the previous election, I think a lot of you are aware of the consequences of sleep restriction, poor academic performance, depressed mood, increased likelihood of substance misuse, particularly stimulants. And also, there's an interesting study in Kentucky where, and this is granted, these are just associations, but there were two schools, separate school districts, one with a late start time and one with a conventional start time. And they found that the incident of adolescent or less than twenty-five-year-old crashes were much higher in the district that, that had the conventional start times or the early start times. So what can be done, a lot of it, the, the district is, is already doing with some of the measures that are proposed with school start times. I've actually noticed in, in speaking to classrooms in the past, that sleep education is actually pretty good in the, in the classrooms. And I would certainly be pleased to, to take part in that, again. This slide pertains to the study that I want to do. There's, there's really not many studies that look, so, one of the theories behind this night owl condition, delayed sleep phase disorder, is that the afflicted adolescents are overly sensitive to light during evening hours and that that sensitivity to light further promotes or perpetuates this night owl tendency. And there have been some studies, particularly the blue spectrum of light is thought to be the, the most potent from a circadian standpoint. And there are some studies that are fairly poorly designed that investigate wearing these eyewear from sunset until bedtime. But the studies that have been done to date, they do involve delayed sleep phase disorder patients, but they are adult studies, few numbers of subjects, there's no controls. That being said, again, sorry for the acronyms, but the sleep parameters in, in these preliminary studies are very favorable. Increased sleep time, decreased time to initiate sleep, higher sleep efficiency, and greater subjective sleep quality. And this is maybe a bit much for this group, but the, this shows the pathway of light and with the endpoint, the pineal gland and secretion of melatonin. And the idea behind this study is that we would be wearing glasses during evening hours to, to prevent, or, or to try to prevent this promotion of a delayed sleep phase tendency. This is what the glasses would look like. There would be two separate groups. We want to recruit about twenty-five subjects over the next three years. We would randomize subjects to glasses that, two different types of glasses. One would be these dark lenses and one, one would be a clearer type of lens. All of the, the glasses that we'll provide are going to be safe for driving, but as you, if you review the IRB document, we just decided to not allow any driving while the individuals are wearing these glasses. And hopefully, that will be, from the time they start using them, hopefully that won't be too much of a hardship. If they are going to drive, they would just remove the glasses during that time period. In addition to wearing the glasses, we would have individuals wear a wristwatch-sized device, about the size of my, of my Apple Watch here. We did this in a previous study. It's just a surrogate measure of, of when they're sleeping, how much they're sleeping. It's kind of Fitbit-type technology. So they would wear one of these on their wrist, they would wear another one as sort of a necklace, because there is a sensor on there that detects light exposure. So, the, the intervention with the two groups would be two different types of glasses. All of them would wear the actograph, both on their wrist and as a pendant. And the, one of, one of the groups, one of the randomized groups would also receive instructions to get up at a particular time each day without deviating it by, by more than one hour. They, I mentioned that there's this ability to look at how we're impacting the clock. That's done with melatonin secretion. We would have the, the participants go to St. Mary's to, to give saliva samples. It would take up, would go fairly late into the evening, so we're going to schedule those on non-school nights. They would have the option of staying overnight there or returning home with a parent or guardian. They would do that saliva assessment at the start of the study. And then subsequent to the two-week intervention, we'd do it again to see if there's been any change. We simultaneously would acquire a lot of objective sleep data with these actographs and also a variety of subjective sleep data. I, I've already gotten a fair amount of interest just from putting out this flyer on, trying to think of the name of it right now, the, the electronic flyer that comes out, Peachtree, yeah. But what I, what I would like is, when I did this in the past, I had teachers at high schools that were interested in me coming at a strategic time to inform the sleep curriculum. I protected time because I received this grant, so I can, I can go during regular school hours, give a talk, dovetail it into my own research study, leave flyers. The participants do get paid three hundred dollars for doing this. And the last time I did this, ten years ago, I can't even remember how I, how, how this permission was acquired, but I was also on the, all the emails of the school districts, since all of you are, are seeing the group of interest every day or certainly have children or relatives perhaps that would qualify. So, I appreciate you giving me the time to speak and appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Smith?
You eliminated the discussion on the public policy, but would, at the end of this, would, you know, there obviously be some public policy implications to this study? Or you don't, you don't think this is going to be wide enough, far enough, deep enough to, to, I mean, there's long research on that already, too, but I'm just curious why you didn't want to address that?
Well, one, because of time limits, for one thing, but I think the, I think that's really a separate, this is sort of, number one, realizing that, that, that change may not, well, it may not happen quickly. And so there, in the meantime, there are still people that are going to be afflicted with this condition and have to arise at a certain time. The other thing is that even when or if that change occurs, individuals that, with the extreme of this condition, you know, I have some, some kids, patients, that are falling asleep two, three in the morning regularly, they still would, would have the potential to impact. Now, the other possibility is, you know, this is a controlled study, they may, they're, I think it's also important to, while I very much hope that it demonstrates a positive impact, there's also the possibility that it will demonstrate no impact. And the, the folks that, that provide these products, there's purported benefit that hasn't been proven, so that would also be-
So it's about really the, about the glasses, do the glasses make a difference in, will they actually have a positive impact on those that have the condition?
Exactly. So do the glasses-
That's the main, that's the main kind of thing you hope to get out of, whether or not they're, those, those make a difference?
Yeah, whether or not they affect sleep parameters positively, which we'll be measuring objectively, and whether, whether or not that, that change, any change in sleep parameters can be correlated with the physiologic assessments that we're doing with the melatonin assessments.
Just one final, then, would we be able to, have you do this, to kind of get some information in terms of, of understanding our own student population, in terms of how many kids might be impacted? Would that be, that might have sleep deprivation as part of it?
Yeah.
Would there be some specific information on our student population that would help inform public policy, I guess?
Possibly, although if you were to do a study like that, you know, there would be a selection bias to, I, I wouldn't be able to, I would just, I'd be able to comment on just the people that-
Took it.
That took, but, so I think in a very general way, there are studies that, you know-
It wouldn't be a predictive, it wouldn't necessarily be a predictor of the total student population?
No, it wouldn't be. There are studies, and, you know, there's a pioneering group in the Twin Cities that, I can't forget, I can't remember her name right now, that data is out there. Not, not for this district, though, you're correct. So I think it would, it would provide some preliminary data in that regard, yeah. No matter what the results are, actually.
Thank you.
Mr. Barlow?
First of all, thank you for your information. I did read your briefing materials. I did find it interesting that one of the four potential consequences was the onset of increased substance abuse. What, high-energy products, caffeine, caffeine fall into those categories of usage, or?
I think it does, but, you know, they're, they're legal.
Sure, sure.
Yeah. But I think that, you know, there's no doubt that caffeine addiction, I mean, even looking at, you know, some of my own kids basically starts at, you know, around that age, because, you know, that's kind of when the clock starts as far as, you know, chronic sleep deprivation, so.
And then additionally, you had referenced that some of the adolescents you have seen could no longer thrive in a public school environment.
Yeah.
Could you, without violating any HIPAA, could you perhaps speak briefly to that?
Yeah, so what, a pretty common scenario, now granted, by the time, I think a lot of parents struggle with this to some degree. But it's, it exists on a continuum, so once you get to the severe spectrum, these parents are struggling every day to get the kid out of bed. And there's, there's struggles related to that, there's, if they do get the kids out of bed, there's social, academic consequences. Oftentimes, there's such truancy that they, they just pull them out of school. And these are the ones that I see in, in clinic that are specifically coming to see me for that purpose. So that, those would be the extreme cases, but I would say, you know, I'm just kind of guessing here, but I'd say forty percent of the time, by the time they get to clinic, they're, they're perhaps out of school or doing some kind of flexible schooling that, that doesn't necessitate that they rise at a certain time in the morning.
Thank you.
I have a question. You'd mentioned the IRB for this project.
Yes.
Do we have that?
Yes. Yeah, we have the approval, the IRB approval, yeah.
No, I see this, maybe I'm just missing it. Is there another document? Because I, I think it's an interesting study and I, great idea, and my understanding is you're simply asking for the, the school district to help get the word out-
Yes.
-to students, so you can recruit them.
Yes.
I, I think that in doing that, it would sort of, not sort of, it implies that we have approved this. And I guess my questions about, students would need parental permission and-
Absolutely. So, so it's been approved through the, the Mayo IRB. And I'm sorry, that didn't, that was part of, one of the documents that I was required to give, actually, before, before speaking here. But, so, yeah, they, they're all underage, they would, unless they're eighteen, they would have to give permission. Really, the parental, the parental involvement is, is required. There's even questionnaires that the parent fills out as part of the screening process. You know, they would have to bring them to St. Mary's, because we wouldn't want them to, to leave the facility at a late time. So the parental involvement is, is required, and for all individuals under eighteen, they would have to sign consent. Typically, what we do is an adolescent assent and then the parental consent, yes.
Yeah, so I'm sort of torn here. I mean, I think it's great, I think we should do it, but I feel a little bit reluctant to approve this before seeing that, the IRB, I mean, the whole thing. I just think it's maybe our responsibility to look at that first before we give the approval.
Well, this is, this is just a briefing, so we could probably track that down before the next meeting, where you're at, where you can take, where you're going to take action on it.
Did I provide it? I did provide it, okay, good, okay. Yeah, I think it's probably just a matter of tracking it down, so.
Perfect. So if that works for you.
Yeah, sure.
Any other questions, comments? Right, it sounds fascinating. Thank you so much.
Okay, great, thank you so much, appreciate it.
We've had a request for a five-minute recess, so we will be in recess at seven thirty-two PM for five minutes. We are reconvened at seven forty PM. Five point oh two, approval of twenty nineteen, twenty twenty course offering changes. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time, I'm going to invite Brenda Witchman, Executive Director of Kirkham Instruction, and Heather Willman, Principal and Special Assignment, to brief us on this item.
Good evening, Superintendent Munoz and school board members. We are happy to be here tonight to brief you on our twenty nineteen, twenty twenty high school course offerings. You know, you saw Mr. Munoz's presentation, and we are working hard to prepare our kids to be ready for their future. So, the process of revising the next year guide actually starts right after it goes to print. So the secondary side of the curriculum and instruction team, we meet monthly with the high school registrars, the principals, and the counselors. And the main focus of those meetings is to review our course offerings to make sure that we're providing opportunities to meet the needs for all of our students. So by the time I stepped into this position in July, most of this, the work on this year's guide was already complete. And I'm happy to say that Janie left me a very big binder full of information, so I certainly had a good start on what needed to be completed. So as you, as you have seen in Board Docs, there are a number of new courses that we've added to the guide. And you may not know the process for choosing those new courses. And there are actually a number of ways in which new courses can be brought forth for consideration. We listen to all of our stakeholders when we're making these decisions. Students, teachers, community members, parents, principals, district administrators. And we all have the same goal, that we want to meet the needs of our students, and those needs are what comes first. And this year, we are excited to have this document, the graduate profile, really as a filter for the course offerings that we want to bring forward. So, it's these things that is, is telling us what our community thinks will make our high school students ready for their future. So Heather has more of the history of many of the new courses. I'm going to let her talk about first those dual credit options.
Sure. So we're offering a new course at John Marshall. It's an economics course through RCTC. It's only offered at John Marshall, just because that's the only site where we've had a teacher go through the application process and be accepted. So our students will be able to get their econ requirement fulfilled and also get college credit. So we're always trying to offer more of the credit-bearing opportunities. Some other highlights, we really looked at English Four, English Electives. And we brought a group of English teachers together, we studied, we arm-wrestled, we fought over titles and wording and semantics, and we have some really exciting new offerings. We have creative writing, which will be a hybrid class. So it will be three days on, in a regular school setting, and then two days independent conferring with the teacher. So we're really trying to think differently about time and space and making sure that we're really meeting individual student needs. we're really meeting individual student needs. Um, an additional offering is professional literacy, and that's also a hybrid course, um, more for college and career readiness, so resume writing, um, looking at your personal brand, that kind of thing. So those are some exciting new offerings, and then we have digital media, so we're trying to think about, differently about how we, um, consume news, how we, um, are critical consumers, and then how we produce things in a digital environment, so that's a new offering as well. And then we have a new course called Unified Elective, um, this is pretty exciting because it will be a course where we, um, pair our regular education students with special education students. It's very general because we wanna be able to have sites make, um, the decision about what course would work best, but we'll have, um, peer mentors that will be paired up with students who have special education needs, possibly in art or physical education.
And, uh, another new offering that is one hundred percent aligned to our graduate profile is this Incubator EDU, and it's actually, um, by Uncharted Learning, and Mr. Munoz has had the opportunity to learn about this for a number of years. A group went to, um, Barrington High School last spring, and then I went with Heather Nussler this fall, so, um, it's pretty, it's very exciting, I was going to say it's pretty exciting, it's very exciting, and really from the student's side, um, it's, it's a hands-on course where students, um, develop and their own product or service startup in an attempt to gain investment funds in a final pitch event, and if you're lucky, we might invite you to the Shark Tank at the end, where we actually vote on, um, the winning, um, products. So real entrepreneurs and business experts will serve as volunteer coaches and mentors, guiding the student teams through the processes of developing a hypothesis about a business concept, testing it, adapting, continually learning and improving. The businesses that students build are real, they're not business cases or simulated experience, which means that they experience mistakes, take risks, and they learn to pivot based on market needs. Students leave the course with a completed business model canvas, competitive analysis, a financial model, a minimum viable product, a pitch deck, a future communications plan, and a future funding plan. So the business that wins at the end of the course actually goes forward, and then students, if they take this in a junior year, um, some students at Barrington, yeah, they're going to school full-time, but they're also running a business on the side, and when you talk to students, they don't just say, well, I'm, I'm a, you know, in that class, they'll say, well, I'm a product developer, or I'm a finance manager. So it would be a year-long course, and this is exciting, we are hoping to offer it in a place that is full of entrepreneurs, Discovery Square, and we are still working out those details, um, but that's a little bit about Incubator EDU. Do you have any questions for us?
Just a reminder, I think of, uh, I think at least three of you board members, several, several years ago, we talked about this at our state conference over lunch, I think I remember talking to you about that, but, uh, this is something that I've been looking at at least four or five years, and, and, uh, the more I hear, uh, about the needs of our community, and I have been in conversation with individuals from DMC and, and potentially looking at getting into either the current Discovery Square or future Discovery Building Two, uh, but, um, working with DMC to potentially get, uh, another site, if we can't get into the first building, potentially get in the second building, uh, but the rationale for having it downtown is that, uh, it's just twenty-five students in a class, they break up into teams of five, and they're supposed to have an entrepreneur adult coaching them and working with them, so having it downtown, it's gonna make it easier for the adults to interact and coach, uh, these students versus them having to go to C-Tech or, or some other location, so, uh, we haven't finalized the location, but, uh, we are in conversation with, like I said, DMC individuals, and hopefully to get that location narrowed down within the next month or so.
Mr. Barlow.
Uh, thank you very much for the presentation, I did notice, uh, with the exception of Incubator EDU, that, uh, all the courses were in a department of some sort or fit, and I noticed that, uh, Incubator EDU just not, other than being listed as a new course, um, what discipline is that, uh, I'm hearing business, okay?
I can address that, Don, it's, uh, in talking to those individuals, I said, uh, it's best offered as an elective, and it's really not looking for the content teacher, it's getting the right teacher to teach that type of course, and, uh, they encourage us not to limit it to business, or limit it to a math teacher, or limit it to whatever, but really getting the right individual, uh, the school that we visited where it's, this program started, uh, is not even, uh, a traditional teacher, he came from the business world and came in and teach, was teaching the course, so, um, that's why we chose to bring it in as an elective and not connect it to a specific content.
It could very well be, though, that the right teacher could be a business teacher.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh, and then additionally, uh, uh, student selection, uh, for, uh, Incubator EDU, how do you envision that occurring?
We plan to market it a bit, and Heather and I need to meet and work on that marketing plan, but it'll be self-selected, there are no prerequisites, and students can take it as juniors or seniors.
And the number of sections that we offer, just like our other courses, just depends on how many students, you know, if there's fifty students between the three high schools, and we'd offer two sections of it, if there's a hundred, then four sections, so it's really, depends on the number of, of kids that sign up will determine how many classes that we run.
Mr. Smith.
I don't have anything to say about it anymore, but I know Ready would probably be, Rochester Area Development would be interested in probably having you talk, they do have the, you know, the incubator or accelerator downtown.
Yeah.
In the Bioscience Building, and they might be able to provide, you know, spa- space for something like this, I know we did that for, you know, the BDPA and others, let them come in there and use the facility to, you know, to work, there's entrepreneurs there, uh, we have a number of entrepreneurs in this community who have not done it once, but twice or three times, that would be excellent mentors if they had, if they have the time to do it, I guess, is they would probably learn as much or more from those individuals about how to, how to do this, especially since, uh, kids here are more likely, because of their background, to do something that's maybe scientific-related or technology-related, and that's a different kind of an entrepreneur than, you know, say, somebody wants to open up a coffee shop or something like that, both good endeavors, but, uh, and the other thing now that this community has that didn't have a couple of years ago, there's, there's actually money here, uh, to, uh, to invest if some, if these kids come up with a really good idea, I've often thought, you know, I sat here and listened to kids that go to the science, um, um, do well in the science, uh, shows nationally and all that stuff, and, you know, they go out and they got these ideas and they're presenting them, but they've basically lost the opportunity to, to, uh, you know, capture the intellectual property that comes to that because it's shared, and it's really, industry's good at supporting and getting kids that, but they're, they're actually used as a way to get ideas from kids, and they don't have to compensate them for that, if they, but if we do this right and teach kids right, that you've got, you know, because intellectual property is a specific area that if you don't do it right legally, you're gonna lose that, and there's, you know, I've thought for a long time, we probably had students have done some things here that, that are probably worthy of being patented and, and, and they should own that intellectual property, and maybe the school district should get a share of that, because we provide the opportunity to do that, but the point I'm making is there's a lot of resources in this community now for, uh, for, to support entrepreneurism that weren't here ten years ago, or even five years ago, and there are people here with capital are willing to risk it, you know, they'll make the decision if they think the idea's worthy of it, and they may wanna, they may wanna look at all of them, they may not wanna just look at the winner, they may wanna look at all of them, because they might decide on a different winner than whoever's so, so, so selecting the winner, so, uh, and that's the nature of entrepreneurism, that, you know, one, one, uh, you may get turned down ten places, and the one place, you know, might, might, uh, give you the resources and the help that you need to get to start, so I very much, um, I think this is a good, good thing, particularly in this community, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of good ideas in this community, innovation in this community, it all starts with that, uh, the rest of it is how do you form a business around that, how do you capitalize, and how you do that, it's all can be learned, and, uh, most people learn it the hard way, by making mistakes, but to the extent that you can formalize it and put entrepreneurs in our community that, that have been through that, all the different phases of that, from taking a company from conception, idea, conception, to forming a business, to actually, actually making a profit, because at the end of the day, they actually have to make a profit, uh, we do have the, the resource, so I'm glad to see that we're, we're, um, we're, um, you know, adding this, I think it'll be a, be a good thing, and should be elective, because not a lot of kids are gonna wanna do it, but there'll be some who want to.
We sure hope so.
I, I'm, I apologize, I took the red-eye home from Phoenix last night, so, um, thank you for the coffee, Deborah. Um, so on the process for this, how do, um, let me back up, since it's, since it's not in a category, where do you find it in the course guide, and what is the official description for this course?
It's in Business Electives, is that, I'm looking at that, and it's called Incubator EDU.
Okay, so it is under Business, okay. Um, and then, do, would students be, they would be going downtown for this class?
That is our, what we're hoping for.
Okay.
Um, we would pull them together from the three high schools, I mean, we've kinda talked about, if we couldn't get a place downtown, we might go to C-Tech.
Okay, but that would be within the, still within the course of the regular day?
Right.
Okay.
And then this, that, it's a two-hour class, and who, who would then, uh, find the business people who would be working with the kids?
They, they do work with us, they will help us recruit, uh, an attorney to help teach the legal side of it, work with a financial person to help teach the finance piece of it, they, the investment that we make is not only just purchasing the curriculum from them, but it's, they're partnering with us to help us get it up and running, uh, so they'll help us, uh, not only market the class, but also help us find the, the community of people to help.
Okay, thank you, and I wasn't gonna mention that I thought it would be a good idea for kids, um, who make money to share it with the school district, Mr. Smith did that, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mention that, but I think it'd be a great idea. Um, another, just nitpicky question about the hybrid classes, where the students meet with the teacher, and then they have time to create on their own, which I think is awesome, are there gonna be any issues in terms of attendance for that?
I think what the, the, it'll be three days that they'll come to class like normal, but then they'll be checking in with the teacher, and then they'll also be working independently, so for creative writing, they may be working in the library, Media Center, working on their writing, but then they, they're going to have those regular check-ins.
Do they have to check in every day?
I don't think they'll need to, um, but they'll kinda work that out, um, and then I think as teachers see adequate progress, then that will be.
Oh, yeah, and I'm not, I, I, I think it's a great model, I'm just concerned sort of about the school district and keeping track of attendance, and if that's gonna be an issue at all.
Right, that's something I think that we should probably look into.
Okay.
Well, we just saw a video about getting away from seat time and that type of.
Oh, no, and I, I'm all about that, and I, I think especially for things like this and for the, for the business classes, it's just, you know, a record-keeping for the state, that's what I.
Well, the, the other component of that could be in terms of liability for the district, if the teacher doesn't know where the heck the kid is, and, you know, that the kid has not checked in with him ahead of time, then I, I don't know if that would increase our, our liability risk at all, or, because they're supposed to be in a class and they're not, but nobody's taking attendance, so.
Um, we, we can look into that, I mean, we have, we, if you look at the high schools, we have kids coming and going all day, uh, but I, you're right, we know when it's their free period, they can leave, but I guess, we'll look on the legal side of that, but really, to me, this is more like college, when I go to college, my professor has hours that I can, if I need to go talk to my professor, I can go during this time, so I think that's kinda the concept I'm taking, some kids will probably, if I'm the teacher and I see from their writing, they're struggling, I may say, you need to come in at this time, versus some kids you can say, well, check with me in a couple of weeks, so, uh, but we can check on the legal side of that.
Mr. Schluessner.
Uh, it's not really a curriculum question, but transportation costs, what kind of additional costs would this have, and is it in the budget?
Well, I think right now, we're, even downtown's not that far from C-Tech, we're thinking we can use the same system that we do with that, they would dump off here and then there, or there and then here, but that's something that we can work out.
Well, once we have a, once we have a transportation arrangement, perhaps with the city, that might take care of some of those.
Yes, if we do, that, that would help.
So you're saying you need a bus stop requirement?
Right. Ms. Seeler, you have a question?
Oh, yes, actually, my, my question was answered, well, to some degree, um, thank you, Ms. Witchman, for answering my questions previously, but, um, I did want to, um, ask for a little bit of explanation, uh, about the concurrent enrollment and how teachers get, um, the ability to teach those classes, we know that this has been an ongoing issue for about five, four or five years, I don't know how long I've been on that committee, um, and I'm thrilled to see that we're expanding those areas, but, um, for the good of the cause, would you talk about those?
Sure, so there's an application process, they do have to have a master's degree, and then, um, in twenty twenty-two, they have to have a master's degree in eighteen credits in the, the content area, um, and so with the econ course, for instance, the teacher applied, um, they looked at the transcripts, so RCTC looked at that, um, and then she has to create a professional development plan, and then, um, a plan for obtaining those credits within that content area. Um, so that's governed by the Higher Learning Commission, um, so we're trying to really work on recruiting, but also looking at where do we have teachers that already have a master's degree in their content area, where it might make sense for us to expand opportunities for students.
So the master's degree has to be in the area in which they're teaching, okay, thank you.
Uh, masters can be in education, but they have to have eighteen credits, plus a masters, eighteen credits have to be in there.
In that specific field, and the master's degree in.
Or a master's in that.
Whatever, okay.
And if any teachers are interested, I'm happy to kinda walk them through the process, there's, there are a few different pieces to it, um, and it's getting, we're, it's becoming more streamlined as we're working through the process, but we wanna be able to op- offer that opportunity to all of our high school students, um, and we're just slowly adding more opportunities.
I just, maybe follow-up, I just think that this is a great, um, and, back up, I don't know if you had the blue highlighted in the, the course guide last year, but I, I loving that, that I can zip through and go, oh, C-Tech, oh, concurrent enrollment, I think that's, that's great, um, I just think that this, um, this course guide, um, as I've had to read course guides for my kids for, I don't know how many years now, five, six, whatever, how many years have we gone, Anna?
Yeah.
Um, but it's, it just really speaks to all the different ways that we are able to serve our students and the different classes, and, um, you know, the graphic, the pathway graphs are really nice, um, I, I feel like we add a little bit more to it each year, um, and so I really appreciate that, and, um, you know, I think folks who maybe don't have high school kids yet, you know, the first time you see this is kind of overwhelming, so, you know, invite those with youngsters to take a look at it and kinda just get a sense of what it looks like and, and what we're offering our students, because I think it's really a lot, I think that's a great testament to our district.
About eighty pages, right, yeah.
And we're working on a project, um, Heather and I are working on some, um, marketing materials for which are the concurrent offerings at each of the high schools, so that it can be a little bit simpler for parents to be able to see where those are, so.
Okay, thank you so much, appreciate it. Uh, five point oh three, approval of facility recommendations by the facilities task force, this is a briefing, I, Mr. Munoz.
She's not working. I'm sorry, she's.
I think I missed.
Oh, wait. Hello? All right. Sorry. She has a. Yeah, it's my.
Okay, well, this is what everybody's been waiting for tonight, uh, the plan tonight is to kinda zip through some, uh, slides to refresh your memory on some of the work that the task force has been doing, and then go over the three options.
Sorry.
And then, uh, talk a bit about some of the additional facility needs that the task force has been looking at, uh, and then after that, I'm gonna give you a summary of the feedback that we received, uh, at the Citizen Voice Meeting last week, and, uh, the hope for tonight is that we can get some, uh, guidance from the board, uh, we're not making any final decisions tonight, but it would be helpful for us and the task force if you could, um, uh, narrow down, I think we're showing three options, if we could. if we could land on one option and then talk about some other additional pieces that we could make part of the survey. So really what we're trying to determine at our next board meeting is what kind of information should we put on the survey in January to ask our citizens on, would they support this kind of option at this cost? How about if we added this at this cost? How about if we added this at this cost? And then from the results of that survey in February, we'll look at that. Hopefully in March or April, we can land on, this is what we want to go ask the voters for. So that's kind of the goal for tonight, and I'm going to turn it off, have Kevin start us off.
All right, so I think that was a great introduction. There are some changes, so the slides that you have in here are the slides where slight modifications or improvements were made. And then the last piece, we'll talk about additional modifications that we think would help make them more acceptable or palatable. So the one piece that I will say, I was fortunate enough to be here for the comments earlier, change is happening to your district because of growth, we all know that. If you don't change boundaries, your buildings are going to be overpopulated on a continuous basis. So the only way to fix that is to continue to add size to those buildings as they sit, and we're doing that in some cases, besides adding buildings in other locations. So I think the way I see my job is to work with the task force to try and understand what the best fit is for Rochester Public Schools. And then at the end of the day, it's obviously your role and responsibility to decide how close I am and which direction you need to push me to come up with a plan that is the right fit. So I've made a number of tough conversations happen already as a group in the task force and the P O C, and I'll continue to do that. My goal is to give you the best tool to teach these students from a facility standpoint, from an overall district standpoint. So with that, Mark and Marla.
Oh, good. Marla Carney, task force co-chair. Okay, the agenda this evening for this briefing item, we'll do a brief review. Why 720 students? Why replace versus additions to current buildings? Options, additional needs. The objectives tonight are to review the new and updated information, receive the public feedback, and discuss future items to be included in the survey. Now, the review of items we previously covered, capacities of facilities, short-term boundary options, the housing study, goals, recommendations, and information base, capacity options, and additional needs. Looking at the current enrollment capacity, elementary schools are sitting at 98%, middle schools 99%, and the high schools at 94%. Draft capital referendum impacts for an annual cost of $106, a monthly cost of $883 would bring the total bond approximately the $200 million over 20 years.
So this slide is an update, those numbers actually went down slightly based on the information from your financial consultants.
The referendum goals, capacity is driving the need for a capital referendum. Maximize the balance of diversity, maximize walkability, maximize district efficiency, and minimize future boundary changes. Recommendations, build to the five-year enrollment projection at maximum 90% capacity. Efficiency, operations, minimize structure, quantity, and transportation. The building sizes, elementary 720, middle school 1200, and high school 1800. Continue increasing the capacity of existing high-value sites. For the high-value buildings and sites, continue to buy surrounding properties for future operations. Utilize property guidelines for purchase of new sites and evaluation of sites to maintain. The first cost, the cost of construction, is less than 5% of the building's operational cost over the life of the building. The property guidelines here, we have the criteria for the existing and for new sites. The red are the elementary locations, your green are.
Alternative education.
Alternative educations. Blue, of course, are your high schools, and yellow are your middle schools. Regarding what M D E requires, elementary schools 17 acres, middle schools 37 acres, and high schools 65 acres plus. Minimum of three miles from existing sites, minimum of two miles from district borders and walking obstructions. They could be looking at a shared site for elementary, middle school, and high school. Access to city utilities, vehicle circulation, public transit, and continue the city relationship. Elementary, future elementary school sites, the white circles are those. I just lost my train of thought. Oh, possible. Possible locations, the black circles are existing elementary school sites, and you can see where the black circles overlap quite a bit. Same thing with the middle school sites. You could see one combined site in this zone, the three circles down at the lower left of 100 to 160 acres. The yellow area where you would be able to have your high school, your elementary, and your middle school. It could serve all three of those needs. An example of future high school sites, you have one in the southwest, one in north-central, northeast, and one in the northwest. And of course, the black circles are the existing high school sites.
Okay, and so now you, just to review, you approved the district-wide option for 2019 through 2022, and we're also recommending some possible future enhancements to the district-wide options. Sibling preference, still demographic balance within 10% of the district average for the schools and the value that are over that 10%, and then also offer it to the students that are in the over-capacity grade levels, and then go to the random selection process. Housing study, we went through this in quite a bit of detail last board meeting, but again, we're trying to understand the current and future housing stock, analyze the trends of our enrollment, analyze the yields per household for our development plan, and then the housing study is being used as our indicator for our future projections.
I do want to, there was a comment earlier today about encouraging us to look at what the city and county has, and this is exactly where we got our data, it was from the city and county, and building permits and future development that they know, that they're aware of.
Okay, so since 1990, the average permits for single-family have been 439, and the multifamily has been 364. Since 2012, that trend has been 315 for single and 560 for the multifamily. Currently, we have 4,500 planned multifamily units over the next five years. We are using the number of 3,500, we're trying to be conservative with this as we look forward with our projections. Single-family units, houses built since 2008. We've had 3,000 homes, a little over 3,000 homes built in Rochester since 2008. And again, this next slide shows the breakdown of where those homes are being built. Bamber Valley, Gibbs, and Jefferson are the three largest areas, and you can see the dots on your map correlate to that population of those homes. Again, single families since 2013, again, we're seeing Bamber Valley, Longfellow, and Gibbs as our higher-populated areas in our growth. Our proposed development, again, multifamily units are the blue, single-family units developments are in the red, and you're seeing the, of course, the multifamily units bunched together in the central part of the city, and then on the southwest corner are more of your single-family dwellings. And again, we're looking at approximately 4,192 market value homes being put in Rochester over this next period. District housing, again, we're looking at a baseline of single-family of 300 units and a multifamily of 700 units for the first five years. Again, that's being very conservative, and then the Model 1 that we'll show you here is adding 300 additional single-family, and then Model 2 is adding 300 single-family plus 250 multifamily units over the next several years. And again, the first five years, we're using 350 and 650 in our numbering. So as you look at this first graph, we're taking our baseline of 300 family, single-family units and 700 multifamily units, and projecting that out over the first five years from 2018 to 2023. And with our projection at 17,441 students, by 2023, this model has us with about 18,643 students in all of those different areas of homes.
And this does not include our preschool enrollment, so that's, you know, we're at, when you include it right now, we're at 18,200, so this does not include the preschool students.
And then baseline one, we're adding an additional 300 single-family units, and then we're projecting that out through 2029. So the first five years on this chart stays the same, and it's the next five years that will show you an increase in additional homes. And again, we're staying on the conservative side with this numbering system. And Model 2 here, again, the baseline plus 300 single-family and 250 multifamily. Again, through 2023, the model stays the same, and then it just shows you in the next five years where that projection growth could be upwards of 19,420 students.
All right, so this is a new slide to you folks. The image that you see up there, the purple lines are the dividing lines of the high school boundaries. The color coordination, the dark or the bold colors are the high school walkable areas. It doesn't take into account for some of the walk boundaries like railroad tracks and major roadways. This is just a walk-distance type piece. And you start to see the middle schools as the lighter shaded areas. The piece that I want to make sure we talk about, anytime we're talking about a referendum, we're talking about the current needs and where you need to be, and my other goal is to make sure you're thinking long-term about what it's, how is this going to affect the other buildings and the other pieces that we're not directly talking to at this point. So when you look at the graph that's there, you'll see that John Marshall, based on, so this is the live-in, great advance concept. So if the boundaries didn't change, and every child that lived in that zone aged five or six years, five years in this case, this is how many students would be within the John Marshall attendance boundary in five years. It would be 2,000 students, plus or minus. This doesn't include any students that might come back into your district that were outside of your district for charter schools or parochial-type schools. So this is strictly the students that are currently as seventh graders, that type of thing, going forward. So we're not recommending a boundary change at this point in time. We're not pursuing any boundary change for the high school at this point in time, but we're making you aware that boundary changes are coming for your high schools if you're going to be able to balance and deal with the student population as it currently exists. This next slide is looking at the middle schools. And the middle schools, this will be impacted, and our next meeting with the task force will be literally to talk about how the boundaries might change for the middle schools, since one of the, what, the one element that's the same throughout all the buildings is adding a middle school to your capacity piece. We are looking at the southwest corner for the middle school, and we'll get into that more, but again, in this case, you'll see that John Adams is hit pretty heavily. What you don't see in this graph is the breakout of the students that go to Fridell or the breakout of the students that go to Lincoln. It's not saying that those don't exist right now, we're just saying that these are the locations where these students live, because which students go to those facilities would change over time. So again, this is a great advance to 2022 when the new buildings come online. So there's been a lot of conversation about a 720-student school versus a 360-student school. And I do realize that occasionally I focus too much on operational savings and what you folks are going to be left with as far as delivering education. The piece that I don't talk enough about are the intrinsic values that come with the new facilities, or the intrinsic values that come with a larger school versus a smaller school, and that's what this slide is intended to do. So yes, there are operational savings. Traditionally, we would say that a district would save a minimum of $1 million for each building that they're not operating. So 230, 360 student buildings versus one 720-student building would likely be about $1 million. Some districts, it's more, some districts, it's less, but that's a rough guesstimate of our baseline piece. The big piece, when you talk about quality from an educational standpoint, is equity and staffing. And this is a situation where because you don't have unlimited resources for funding, you have people like counselors or social folks, social worker folks that are working .4 or .3 at your small buildings, and they're 1.0 F T E at your large buildings. So what that might mean is if you have a social worker that's interacting with a student on a Tuesday, and then has to go to a different building on Wednesday, if that student has a problem or an issue and they want to talk to that counselor, that counselor's not there, and they need that backup. Now, we've heard a lot of great stories about your staff, I'm going to commend you on your staff, because staff is and will continue to be the main driving factor of the educational quality of your students, right there with parents, of course. Parents being the most important in the home setting, but from what you can control, it's the staff. So equity and services is one of the elements that you gain with a larger facility, because now you have a large enough student body that you can equitably afford to fully staff these buildings with the resources, and the students have access to. Balancing of diversity, we've talked about that quite a bit. A smaller neighborhood school that is truly just walk starts to take on the characteristics of that neighborhood, which isn't a bad thing, but there are some requirements out there that say that these buildings need to be more in tune with what your overall diversity of your district is versus what your neighborhoods are. And then the last piece is the lower construction cost per student. If you were truly providing the same amenities to a 360-student school that you are to a 720-student school, you're providing about 75% of the square footage for 50% of the kids. So what that means is you're still going to build about 65,000 to 75,000 square feet if you're going to give them a gym that's separate from the cafeteria and the amenity spaces or other spaces that you need to provide special education and gifted and talented programs, those types of things. So your cost per student, first cost goes up besides your operating costs as you go through the process. Yes?
So why originally were schools built around 300?
Education has changed dramatically over the years. When you talk about special needs students, there was a time when special needs students were put off into a separate building and segregated. Now that we've rightfully included them in the main teachings of the education process, that's actually reduced the capacity of some of your buildings, because now you're taking classrooms and turning them into special needs rooms or other functions. So that's one of the factors. The other factor is when you looked at how transportation was, whether it was 40 or 50 or 60 years ago or 100 years ago, the smaller buildings started to make sense because it was neighborhood-based and the walkability and that type of thing, and you didn't. was neighborhood-based and the walkability and that type of thing, and you didn't have the, the population constraints that you have now. It was much more of a factory delivery of education than a lot of the,
Right.
...the individualized education that you're hearing today, tonight. Yeah, I can't say that every piece that was added tonight was like a perfect run-up for what you were going to hear from me, so it saved me a lot of talking. The next item that I want to talk about is the new versus addition and remodel. This is just a quick look at the Bishop concept. The upper right-hand corner are the dollars associated with trying to get the existing Bishop up to something similar to what a brand-new Bishop would be at 720 students. The image across the bottom shows the approximate size of what that addition would be to create those support spaces, things like that. Some of the, so the left-hand bullet list are the items that you don't necessarily see or, or understand from such crude and simple graphics. Your site circulation issues, you're still going to have those site circulation issues because your building is taking up a large portion of the site, and to try and separate bus and parent drop-off is, is difficult with, with an arrangement that you have sitting there versus being able to, to start from scratch, so to speak. The building is long. Some people would say, well, what's, what's the problem with that? When you talk about where the main office is or access to these different facilities, it's a much longer distance that a student may be traveling without guidance or without observation. So when you talk about difficulty of controlling and managing the student population in a positive manner, it becomes more difficult. Significant site impact, again, you're taking up a large part of the site, you're losing green space and some of those things, and you're still going to have to deal with storm, stormwater issues, that type of piece. High energy use, the, it's probable that the buildings that you have have little to no insulation in the walls, and as single-story buildings with, I'll say, differing amounts of glass or window-to-wall ratio, you use an awful lot of energy to heat and operate these facilities. There is infrastructure, no matter how much money you spend, that will not be upgraded. All of your piping underneath the floor slabs will still be the same piping that it currently was, that it currently is, which is aging piping that's 50 to 70 years old that will be failing at some point. Your wall construction is still the same wall construction. You can make improvements, it'll continue to last, but it's, it's lost a fair amount. The biggest piece is the lacking, lacking the educational quality. There's a, I think a lot of people have heard about the LEED building standards, and that's energy efficiency. The piece that people don't necessarily understand about LEED is it also went towards the, the indoor environmental quality, what those elements are for the humans that are using the facility. When you talk about schools and the educational quality of schools, you're talking about daylighting, it's not just about maximizing the amount of light that comes in, it's about making sure you control it to reduce glare so that you don't have issues with either your technical devices or students actually having direct sunlight in their eyes. Contrast ratio, which is the light levels, directly impact classrooms' efficiency and effectiveness as well. Air quality is a big item, you've done IQ projects, that helps, but it doesn't get it to where a new building would be. Acoustics within a classroom are critical. We don't necessarily think all, think about the students that have ear infections or are not quite understanding the, the spoken language, especially when you have a diverse population like you do. Missing a syllable or not understanding what a teacher's saying can dramatically set back that educational piece. So thinking about acoustics in the classroom design is critical. And then the last piece is the thermal quality section of the buildings. If your buildings aren't insulated, you'll naturally end up with the drafts and the cold-warm points within the room, and all of those factors factor into the ability for students to stay attentive and engaged within the classroom. Obviously, your teachers help with that when they're extremely engaging, but sometimes that's really tough to do in, in the facilities you have. So I'm going to talk about the capacity options, or the three options. Some of them have changed slightly, others are exactly the same. When we talk about where we started with the first three options, I think we've, we've changed dramatically from what some of those options were. Some pieces have, have stayed the same. So option one is a new elementary building in the northwest, and Churchill being either rebuilt, rebuilt or added to, to create a 600-student capacity, expandable to 720. Originally, option one was just Churchill. Just having Churchill wasn't going to meet the capacity or the, the enrollment growth in the northwest corner. The other piece that just Churchill wasn't doing is it wasn't helping us out enough with the demographic balance of your buildings across the north side. So adding the new elementary in the northwest piece of property that you own with the city right now helps us balance the demographics, the free and reduced, and the students of color elements that we're looking at. This option does also include Longfellow as a 720. Since the Citizen Voice and previous meetings, we've continued the conversation of does the 4515 move out, or doesn't it? The 4515 could certainly stay at Longfellow at a 720-student building. And the reason I say that it could certainly stay that way is looking at the waiting list for kindergarteners. There were 75 kindergarteners that are on the waiting list to get into Longfellow as a 4515, plus as you make it larger, if you make it a neighborhood-first building, as it currently sits, you have a much larger population base filling it, plus then the 4515 on top of it would allow that. That's not saying that it, we shouldn't still consider the 4515 at Pinewood, but it's saying that it's not a reason not to, to look at making those improvements or those adjustments. Montessori at Hoover is still a recommendation. Hoover is one of those buildings that's literally trapped and surrounded by other elementary schools all the way around it. So when you look at a district walkable model, you can't fill those buildings in a, in a comfortable manner and still meet your walking piece. Right now, it's a sister school to Churchill, and it definitely changes its ability to be diverse. The, and that also then increases the capacity at Ben Franklin for that southeast sector. And then the conversations of newcomer and Spanish immersion, being able to move those buildings into Bishop and/or Bamber helps with, again, balancing demographics, but it also increases the capacity for Riverside to take on more of the local students around that building and, and within it. Middle school at 1200, go ahead.
I have a question on this one. Maybe I wasn't paying attention to the boundaries, but if there's a new middle school in the southwest, how does that help John Adams, which is overcrowded and slated to get much more?
Yep. So that's the piece that we're looking at with the task force next Tuesday, but what we're looking at is taking that current boundary that's on the west side between what Mayo, Mayo right now kind of takes the entire south half of the district. So taking that boundary and pushing it up, and right now, we're analyzing how far to push it up, and that's the conversation that'll happen with the task force. And at the same time, does Kellogg come over the top a little bit further and drop down further to the south? Right now, it already comes over the top, but bringing it down a little bit further south would help with that as well.
And I'll just add, I think one of the questions we, we got on our feedback was why the new middle school in the southwest, and the rationale behind that is the data has shown eventually, probably 10 years down the road, we're going to need a fourth high school, which you'd want to put one in each quadrant, so it makes sense to have a middle school that feeds into the new high school, so that's why we're looking at the southwest.
Yeah, so I have a question. I have a question between these, the two options. So the previous option one had zero net additional structure on the sites, and this one has one net additional structure or sites. All the other information below that has stayed the same, but what I'm hearing differently than I heard the last time you presented to the board was that Longfellow, you had talked about making program changes between Longfellow and Pinewood the last time for option one, right?
Actually, I would, I would say the, the change that happened from the last option one that we presented versus this one is we've added the new elementary school on your property in the northwest. I believe the previous option one did not have that, and that's why it's net one additional structure.
No, I understand that.
Okay.
But you just talked about how, about how Longfellow could go to 720 and still be a 4515 school, whereas the last time we were talking about the possibility of swapping the 4515 with Pinewood.
And this still reads that way? What I'm saying is I don't want to get hung up on the capacity options based on how you operate the buildings or the boundaries that you do.
Because it's some, I mean, at some point, we're going to actually have to talk about the education piece, I'm not sure when that's going to happen.
And we're sure that Longfellow can be expanded.
The, so there's, we're looking at property options for that, because that is a, a very small and tight site, but that area is a very good location for, for a building, for walkability and for serving the, the neighborhood piece. We've talked with the city a little bit about some land swap or land improvements approach. We're continuing to look for other new property acquisition options in that area to see if that's an option. So the, I would say, worst-case or least favorable would be that your Longfellow project would be the last project you do, and that you would use, say, Fredell as the elementary building for a year, so that you could tear down the building and construct without students and, and traffic on that site, put up the new elementary, and then bring the kids back into that building. So that's kind of the, the longest timeframe and, and most disruptive.
That would eliminate the need for 4515 at Pinewood.
Yes. If you, if you moved the, if you made Longfellow building, say, 4515.
So, so the, so the parameters that is, is can you acquire enough land to make, to make that all possible? Because you're going to need, you're going to need more land to do it, right?
So,
To expand it to 720.
So going to a multi-story building will keep the building footprint about the same and still meeting that additional student capacity. The one thing that I would say is critical for increasing the capacity of that site is making sure that there's a second entry for vehicle and traffic circulation. So.
I'm just, I'm just confused if it, if the option is Longfill to make it 720, do we really need the 4515? Is that, should that be off there? That shouldn't be on there?
That could be, and what I'm saying is, don't let your current perceptions of building operations drive the capacity option you're looking at, because you could say in five years, we're not going to do 4515 at all, or we're going to do three buildings at 4515 because there's the request or the need. What we're, what I want to focus on today is making sure that we understand capacity model and approach to drive it, and then what's going to follow as your student population occurs over the next four years, is that's when you're going to have to start finalizing those boundaries for each and every one of the buildings and decide the district op, option locations.
Yeah, worst-case scenario is we could use the current Longfellow site, but we would have to have a temporary one-year space for those students while you're demolishing that current building and just building multi-stories versus one, one level.
The comment about Longfellow at 720 being able to be 4515 is it looks like you currently have the demand for that, plus the neighborhood capacity to, to fill that, so it would be an option to leave that as, as the, the delivery system within that facility. And then the last piece on there is the safety and security, and that is the secure entry, main entry to every one of the buildings, so the office and check-in type concept. So again, these next slides are just images that you've seen before about how could these buildings sit on the site and, and how would they fit? As we start to, to look at this closer, we'll provide much better graphics that show the site circulation, the traffic and the parking and those as options. When and if you go to referendum for this, it would be still, I would recommend a very big-picture, 30,000-foot level of how that site would work. This shows the Longfellow, you can see there's some overlap on the building, and that's why I would recommend that you move the, the kids off-site if, if you're stuck to just that footprint, but you can see that there's still quite a bit of space.
Is the arrow there, is the bottom one? It's, it's not a thruway from any road.
It, it isn't right now, you are correct. Yep. The city is looking at getting more access and better access to the soccer fields on that south side, so that would be more of a future piece, but again, you're driving through park, parking lot to, to get there.
That green space is all city space?
Yes. Yep. The softball field to the east is a, is a city-owned softball field. So this is an example of that, of that boundary adjustment, and we've, we've heard some conversations on that already today. So what we're looking at here is trying to balance the capacities of the buildings at the same time that we're looking at diversity and, and balance there. So the next slide is if you didn't, if you took all this district-wide option students and left them in their boundary that they currently exist for neighborhood, those are the types of populations that you'd see, so that's the live-in of, of those buildings. And we put that nice white box over it because there's a lot of buildings that are red, almost all of them are red because the, the neighborhood's in the sizes. So the next slide is what it looks like if you just assume that the district-wide option piece would travel forward. Now, one of the reasons why we've made the district-wide option that we, recommendations that we have is in most cases, your buildings that are free and reduced challenged or racially challenged have, those numbers get worse as, as you take out the district-wide option students instead of improving the, the balance. It, it makes the balance less equal to the district standard, or the district average, excuse me. So then we talk about option two. The capacity increase has gone down from 1,700 and some to 1,470. We're still talking about the new elementary school in the northwest corner, replacement of Bishop, replacement of Longfellow. So the big change here is Churchill is no longer in the mix to be increased in size. Churchill would become a K5 at about 264 students or something to that effect. And that would be a fully walkable building because of the size of the popul, population base, it would, all the students would be able to walk to it.
And like option one, the final piece would be, as discussed in option one.
The other piece that was recommended at the Citizen Voice was instead of talking about getting rid of Fredell, maintaining Fredell for, for other district needs, and that's an option for the, for the district for sure. Again, my goal was to try and minimize the number of buildings that you were trying to maintain, but understand that you have programs that might belong and do better in that facility is, is definitely a, a piece that needs to be looked at. So the boundary change here, that's the, the major difference. In option one, the boundary between Gage and the new school was basically the river heading north. In this case, the new school has come over the top and taken on more of that northeast quadrant, and Gage goes out to the, to the east to bring in those students, and you can see Churchill has been confined to a very small walkable zone. So as in option one, Churchill, Elton and Falwell are all 100% walk buildings. Part of that is to reduce, Falwell is a very tight site, if we can eliminate buses at that facility, it definitely improves the site circulation and the safety for the kids and the, and the parents and liability for the district, so. So again, I'm not going to go through this slide, but you, you understand the, the pieces that we were looking at and what the difference between this image and this image is. So option three was looking at how far back can we scale this and still meet the needs going out to at least a five-year duration and beyond? And so this is the new elementary school in the northwest, but it does not include the rebuild of Longfellow in the southeast. So the conversation that happened, of course, during this one was if we're not adding capacity in the southeast from a new building standpoint, then we need to add capacity some other way. And that was, the thought process was to increase the district-wide option of Lincoln from a K8 to a K5 to add additional elementary capacity. So by doing that, your capacity only drops about 200 students instead of 350 or 400 students at the elementary level. And then, of course, your middle school capacity actually goes up slightly because, or goes down slightly as well, because now you've taken away that middle school capacity. So you've taken the middle school capacity and moved it to the elementary school, yes?
So, so I have a question on, on Lincoln, and would that become a K5 neighborhood school?
So district-wide school.
Let's, let's wait on that one.
Yeah, no, I,
Thank you.
I didn't understand.
Yeah, but good question. Yeah, but good question.
But, but yeah, it would still, as indicated on that slide, it would still remain a district-wide option. So your, your busing would still be about the same for bringing kids into that area. Here you can see the boundaries change. One of the concerns with this one that we hadn't fully vetted is when we look at the diversity piece, Pinewood definitely exceeds the, the variation that we would, that we'd be okay with. So when you look at the live-in here, Pinewood jumps up to, I think, sixty-nine or sixty-eight. And then it goes up even higher when you look at some of the removal of students for district-wide options. So from that aspect, this one still had a major flaw in how do we balance the, the diversity in the southeast corner. These are the, the values or the costs associated with the options. The first option was rough, very similar to option two the first time through. Now it's gone up about twenty-four million because we've added an additional construction project to it. So it's a hundred and eighty-seven at the bottom versus a hundred and sixty-two at the bottom of option two versus the one twenty-seven of option three. And again, those options do not include the other unfunded needs that were discussed or, or talked about. I think these have stayed the same since the last time that we presented them. The only pieces that, that may have changed is just adding more information to what those pieces are. Couple of things that I would say about them is creating equity at the high schools is always a good thing. Obviously, you folks are familiar with that and how that can build and generate excitement behind a, a referendum. Pieces like the pool, that's actually going to reduce your operating costs and take a fair amount of dollars off of your long-term facility maintenance schedule that you have out there to do repair and replacement and betterment of the, of the, of the pools that you have. And the additional restrooms, we did reduce that down to just two locations where it seemed to be the most critical, which are John Adams and John Marshall. Those are, you know, older buildings, lower restroom counts. And so trying to increase the access to, to restrooms in those buildings to make sure that we're reducing the conflict and, and interaction that you have between the students. The security piece is the, so the middle column that says physical structures or just left of middle columns says physical structures. That is the secure entries that are included in each one of the options, one, two and three. The dollars to the, to the left and to the right of that in the columns are the additional dollars that were requested through the legislative funding piece that are not funded and then would require to, if you were going to move forward with those security improvements to be done through this step of a process. Yes.
Sorry, another question. Door alarms, that's in addition to the buzz-in thing?
So door alarms, when you're talking about door alarms, it's about securing the perimeter of the building. So each and every one of your exterior doors would have an alarm sequence to it. And it may get set right away at seven o'clock in the morning, or it may be on all the time. What that does is it tells you if that door opens or closes. So now if Johnny went off-site to, to grab lunch and he comes back and texts Susie, let me in, you know the door just opened and you can deal with that.
There's video too, I would assume. There'd be video too, I would assume. Not just alarm, video.
Yep, generally video so that you can address the issue and make sure it doesn't happen again. When we look at the dollar values here, some of the modifications were made to the spreadsheet as well. The elementary gym and cafeteria, I pulled that dollar value out because it would be, how many buildings do you want to do at? You have twelve facilities that aren't that way. Coincidentally, Bishop, Longfellow and Churchill are all buildings that share a gym and cafeteria type piece. So by doing the work at those buildings, you would be removing that need or, or element from it. And again, the, the restrooms was reduced down to four hundred. It was at eight hundred. We were thinking that it might have been additional structures or buildings, but reducing it down to just the two buildings. So with that, I think I'll turn it over to you.
Oh, is it not part of that? Okay, last week we had our third Citizen Voice and I'm going to try to recap and just give you a summary. This first slide shows you the percentage of individuals that participated in that event. And you can see that we were very well represented by a couple of schools. So I think we'll have to keep that in mind as we move forward that this may not be a true reflection of our entire district. But I think the feedback we get on that survey we do in January will be a better representation of our entire district. First question, we went over the housing data with them so they get an understanding of how we were getting our projections. And we asked them, does the housing study match your perception of growth in our district? And you can see it was kind of right in the middle. I can give you some, a summary of the comments that we received. And majority of them felt that we were too conservative and felt that we are going to grow faster than what the housing and the data that we shared with them. So they think we're going to grow much faster. And there was a lot of comments about the effect of DMC on the growth of our district. And then a specific comment that says spend the money now. Example, gives elementary should have been built bigger. Now we need another option. With DMC, there's going to be a huge growth in the next twenty years. Plan for that. Build a new high school, middle school and a couple of elementary schools. Right now, there's a lot of growth in the northwest, southeast corner of Rochester. In ten, fifteen years, it's probably going to be in the southwest area as well. So trying to summarize the feedback specifically directed to this. There were a lot of other comments about, don't do this, don't do that to our school. But just specific comments about the housing, they just, I would say they felt we were too conservative and we're going to go faster than what the numbers show. Again, we asked them their support for option one and you can see it's kind of right there in the middle. Kind of a summary of the, the feedback that we received is that they felt this needs, this option meets the, the needs, capacity needs better than the other two. It gives more opportunity for growth. This often seems to address the capacity issue the best. There were comments, so however, this is the most expensive. This option gives the district most capacity needs for future growth. It makes, if you make changes then, it would be worth it in the end to do changes now versus later. Most all, option one changes will eventually need to be done anyway. And then somebody made a comment, build new buildings and stop dumping money into inefficient buildings. All programs are being saved, not destroyed. Okay, and then support for option two, kind of a little bit, not quite up to the three, but close to three. Kind of a summary of what we heard on option two is they felt that this kind of takes a middle approach. Still a good option, but will not be enough in ten to fifteen years. Felt that option two is the best option to accommodate future growth. Places new buildings in an area of town that will continue to see rapid growth. Additionally, new building in the northwest may entice families back from nearby districts. Funds are lower, but the enrollment percentages are better than option three. If long-term stability is a factor as well and has a lower financial impact, this should be considered. And then the feedback that we received on number, option three wasn't very well supported, as you can see. Basically, we heard it's the lowest, as it does not really fix the problem. It puts a Band-Aid on the problem, provides some improvement. But as a district, we will only continue to have the same issues we face every year. Puts us almost at ninety percent capacity again. We will be back at the same spot in the future.
Yep.
Excuse me, I guess I want a point of clarification. I get this is what people's comments and what people's beliefs and what they, they feel the situation. But does every one of these options address the capacity issue and, and fix the capacity issue or not? In, in terms of longer, the longer, the longer-term view? Because I, I want to separate fact from, you know, what people believe. Because if I learned anything, people believe what they want to believe. But I'm, I'm in search of what the, what the facts are so we make the best possible district for the long run. So if what they're saying is true, I guess I want to know that. But I'm, I guess I want to hear what your thoughts are on that.
So if you go back to the original goals that were discussed and being at a ninety percent capacity five years out, if you take the housing and student studies or you look at the district's projections of where student, student growth will be over the next five years, even option three meets it from a district-wide standpoint. My concern with this, with option three is that it does, in my opinion, come up a little bit short in that southeast corner. Because the only capacity that you're increasing are moving Hoover up to gain more capacity at, at Bishop, or excuse me, at, at Ben Franklin. And then the little bit of capacity that you gain from moving the six through eight out of, of Lincoln. But that's a district-wide piece versus that regional southeast corner. So from an overall district standpoint, it meets your goal of being less than ninety percent capacity based on our projections and the district's projections. But it doesn't necessarily do it as well from a geographic and regional standpoint.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification.
And then the final question we asked them, we shared the slide that you saw about additional facility needs and asked them to tell us what they think we should include. Safety and security was, was the top boat getter, I guess you can say. And then additional pool improvements was next. But we did have members of the, one of our high school swim teams showed up to provide some input. So that might have impacted how that came out. An elementary, separate gyms and cafeterias came up high. And then future property needs was also up there. And then I think auditorium improvements was the next in line. So, and then we did, on the survey, we asked them, are there additional needs that aren't on the slide? And the only two that really came up were baseball facilities and middle school sports facilities. But other than that, they just commented on the ones that were on the slide. So I think you're the closer.
Yep. I'll let you close us out. So based on the feedback and the information that I've seen and understanding how the survey is going to work, the base recommendation I would have for you folks would be what I would call option, option two with, or excuse me, option one with Churchill as a specific separate question. So option, so, sorry, I got to rephrase that. Option two would be the base option with a separate question for do we, for twenty-five million, twenty-five and a half million, whatever that final dollar value is for the, for the Churchill rebuild, do we include that in the piece? What that type of a setup or scenario does is it allows you to find out the, the voters' expectations of what they feel they can sustain from a, from a tax and payable standpoint and where they feel they should go from a capacity standpoint. So it kind of answers that question of maximizing that capacity at the, at that seventeen hundred plus. The other pieces that I would add to the question section would be the pool question as far as additional needs, the high school sites, the auditoriums, the property value and the security needs based on that support. I would recommend rolling those right into the option and not having them as separate questions along with the restrooms. Their defined needs, the property piece, I think lends, puts you in a situation where you can buy one piece of property in the southwest for an elementary school, a middle school and a high school, all on a combined site type scenario.
Okay, so I'll start. There are a number of people here and who have been contacting us who also think we're not thinking big enough. I mean, I would like to get the big piece of land southwest, do a high school, middle school, elementary school right now. Just do the whole thing. I would like to build a whole bunch of little elementary schools. And then I would like to see how the heck we're going to get a referendum like that passed. So short of that, three things. First of all, I think it, things get more complicated when we start talking about district programs that are choice programs and then building. I was uncomfortable frankly at our last meeting because people who love Lincoln, and I understand that they love Lincoln, and they didn't want it to change because they love it. I think we have to make decisions based on programs. My kids all went to big elementary school in Rochester and they adored their ele, well, two of them did, their elementary school. But for right now, I would feel more comfortable if we would leave Lincoln as it is, leave the choice programs as they are with the possibilities of moving Spanish immersion Montessori. If we need to move those, fine, but keep those intact, keep Lincoln K-eight, keep Longfellow forty-five fifteen. Forget about moving it to Pinewood. If possible, expand Longfellow on the site where it is currently. Build a new elementary school northwest. Build a new middle school southwest and keep Fredell. Now that's more than we've anticipated and I don't know if that's too much. I mean, if the dollar amount for that is just going to make it untenable. But I guess my first thing is I think that the choice schools, that's, are the district-wide school options, that's a different discussion. And I would just assume that we keep the district-wide school programs intact at this point. Mr. Schlesner.
Thousand times agree with what Dr. Marvin just said. A lot of the things I had wrote up last night, twelve of them, I took a lot of notes. Effectively say that when you look at success of a referendum, you have to have not upset a whole lot of people. And you start messing with the choice programs and you're going to upset a whole lot of people. We've clearly seen that message. Southeast, I've been on three task forces now and the southeast is somehow I was the forgotten child. You look at page seventeen, proposed development, there's a number of forty-one ninety-two on there, twenty-one ninety-two if that's in the southeast. Over half of the future development is in a quadrant that we're not talking about building a new school. I just find that interesting. You, you, you're absolutely right. We have to look at the numbers. We have to look at the facts. That's a fact on that slide. Twenty-one ninety-two southeast, no school. Why?
Well, that's why we're suggesting a rebuild of Lincoln or of Longfellow at seven twenty. That's our southeast.
Right, and that was the capacity increase of about three hundred students.
And then don't forget about the increase for Ben Franklin by moving Montessori, you increase by another two hundred students there as well. So it's about two hundred and sixty, I think, overall.
And a couple other notes kind of on this topic. Like I said, I have plenty. I'm going to take my time tonight. Communication, the Citizen's Voice meeting last week, it was a lot of information. We all know that. And as I've sat through it now like three or four times, it takes a while to consume that. I think it's all good information. But there wasn't a whole lot of community voice versus community consumption of information. I would highly suggest the district consider another community voice where it's simply a question and answer. And the information that's been presented, let's actually give our community a chance to share their voice and answer the questions that they have. Because I, as I read a lot of the social media discussion, there's just a lot of misinformed or confused citizens out there. Not that you haven't done a great job presenting information. I actually very much really have. It's just, again, a lot of information, a lot of information for people to consume.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take responsibility for that because I'm the one that made the decision to do it that way. We felt that by allowing people We felt that by allowing people to provide feedback either electronically or on a piece of paper, would get every voice in that room. If not, we would spend an hour hearing from one, maybe two schools, the same thing y'all heard tonight, and not everybody in the room would have an opportunity to give us their voice. So that's why we did it the way we did. We can, if you recall, when we did the 4515, we did three of those. The same six people that dominated the conversation were every three nights. That's all who got to speak, because it was open, people could stand up and talk, say whatever they want. So that's why we made the decision to give everybody an opportunity to provide us feedback.
Well, and on that note, that was as long as they did it in three hours after the meeting was over. Because I heard from a number of folks off the survey, great idea, great start for input. People weren't given time. A lot of them at home took care of family matters, went to go fill out the survey, and it's closed. They wanted to share their voice, and they weren't able to share their voice. That's why a person came here tonight, that's exactly what she wanted to do. I think that stuff is, it's absolutely great stuff, moving in the right direction, of getting the input of the community. It just needs to be embellished a little bit more than it has. It's a great.
Do you have suggestions on how we could do that? I mean, do another citizen voice and just let people stand up and speak? Is that what you're suggesting, or open up the survey again longer?
I think opening the survey would absolutely be a good thing.
Okay.
You know, the district's been doing a lot of good stuff with
Thought exchange.
Thought exchange.
Thought exchange. Well, let's do one. We've got a lot of good information from those. This is a great way to get feedback from people.
So I think if you truly want to provide that question-answer piece, I would tend to go maybe away from the social media and provide a format where a person is able to get up and ask three questions or one question and two follow-ups. Not provide them the opportunity to grandstand and take away other people's opportunities to speak. But if we set it up as a question-answer piece, I think that would be a possibility. The only concern I have with that is asking people to come out. They're taking time out of their busy lives, and you'll get some people, which is great. But we don't get all the people that we need, which is where that end survey piece happens.
But I think that we've seen like from all of the groups that we've interacted with, there's usually a couple folks, you know, like Mike Beck, they're kind of representing Lincoln. He'll go back, he'll talk to the people, he'll share what he gained from the meeting. And yeah, we have the proxy folks who will do that. And I think Rochester is really good at that of having a few folks from a few schools represent the schools. But you're absolutely right, and Mike is as well, we don't want it open-ended because that is an issue. I think your suggestion is a really good one. And it's just, again, giving that opportunity for clarification of information. We all know, you guys have done a great job of getting input from DMC, City, County. There's a misconception that that hasn't happened.
Thank you, Mr. Perillo.
Thank you. There are probably four very quick points I'd like to make. One is, it is important to keep in mind the capacity model, I agree completely. And yet, and the point has already been made, I also am aware, and I will use the term, the educational impacts of, and may relate to what I would call legacy programs, be it newcomer, Spanish immersion, 4515, Montessori, okay? It probably is important to have that conversation regarding those legacy programs as relates to the overall, if you will, trajectory of the Rochester Public Schools. For instance, often we are asked to expand these programs. Spanish immersion, they've done that, Longfellow's done that. And so I think the district, at some point in time, we should probably communicate or establish what our long-term strategy is and/or goals are as relates to, again, my term, legacy programs. And then, thirdly, the, separate from the capacity, which is going to be a reality, then the boundary changes, which certainly this may accomplish short-term in answer for a few years, only to, a few years after that, potentially institute a whole new round of boundary changes, to which the community, I think, looks to the board. Oftentimes, that's that vehicle to have insight and provide reasoned policy and fiscal constraints and direction. And I think anything we do should certainly be done from the point of view of long-term value, you know, versus short-term solution. And I'm not sure I am any more clear in terms of knowing which of these three options, so I, and I appreciate the clarification regarding option three, but of the remaining two, you know, it's quite interesting. And I believe there still are opportunities to learn. And if indeed the goal is to, tonight, have a takeaway that will lend itself towards the survey that will be and superintendent, I think I recall you saying that was the hoped-for goal, that we would provide, we, the board, would provide you the opportunity to know, survey-wise, what direction or what we're kind of leaning towards, so.
Yeah, our hope is at the end of our next meeting that we could kind of have things finalized so we can start developing the survey that we're going to send out in January. The rationale behind that is if two weeks from now you come up and say, well, we can't, we're not supporting this, this, and this, and we have to go all the way back to the drawing board, we have some time to do that, and then bring it back to you again in December to get approved for the January survey. And, but, what's on the survey isn't the final decision, because the feedback you get on a survey will guide you on, this is what we want to include for this amount of money. That's going to be our question on the referendum, so it just, and then have some time for the task force in between that to make some adjustments based on, you know, you know, as Chair Marvin said, she said, I can't support changing the district-wide options. Well, if the entire board says that, the sooner we know that, the sooner we can start tweaking the options. So that's kind of what we're looking for, at least by our next meeting, some guidance on, this is a no, this is a deal breaker. We're not going to, we can't support this as a board. And then the task force can make some tweaks to bring back to you again for final approval before we write up that survey in January.
Mr. Smith.
You know, in a perfect world, you know, with nobody being impacted by anything we're going to do, but the truth is, this, you know, this is going to impact people in the district, no matter what we do, no matter what option we take. So I'm for setting aside the programming kind of question, if you will, because programs can go to wherever facilities are and where kids are. To me, this whole exercise is about making sure that we have the physical infrastructure in the buildings that this district's going to need over the next, you know, 15 to 20 years, hopefully, so you don't have to do that. Because no matter what option we decide, no matter what we do, this will be the largest bond referendum the city's ever seen, this school district's ever seen. And it's going to be difficult to do no matter which option we pick. I was leaning towards option three, because I think from option three, the cost of that, that's why I asked the question. Because with option three, you could take the additional 25 million, and for that, you give what you have, you can do all the additional stuff, plus that, I mean, needs. But now I'm hearing, that may not do it, so I'm not necessarily supporting that option anymore. Option two is probably looking better. But I think we have to keep in mind, no matter what we do, there are going to be people impacted, and you'll hear from 200 people about this issue, 200 people that. But we've got 18,000 students that we need to be thinking about, not the 500 or 600 here or there. It's how do we most efficiently provide for the long-term needs of this district in the lowest-cost fashion? I mean, I think we all have a tendency, we want to provide what's needed at the right cost. It's not about, is it 180 million or 160 million? What's the right thing to do for the, you know, for the right amount of money? So I think that's what we struggle, because you hear, you hear people talking about their situation. Nobody, if I'm not impacted by the change, then I'm okay with what you, with whatever you do. We leave Lincoln alone, they'll be happy with whatever it does. If they're held harmless, then they'll probably more or less be happy with it, ever. And I'm not saying we should do, I think I tend to think, let's get the programming out of this and focus on the functionality of the buildings, and then you can address those issues. But I get the, you know, we all get, to your point, if you alienate 800 people, and they're out there saying, you know, whatever, that's going to be a problem. So it's a real difficult thing. So taking the time, and going back to your point, think having, let the community speak, let them tell us what they're thinking. Have the question-and-answer period, but it's going to take a chair or somebody chairing that to make sure people are asking questions and not giving speeches about what they want to do. It's going to take a strong person to chair that meeting, so to make sure that doesn't get distracted from that. And just make it clear from the outside that that's what the purpose of that meeting is. You know, it's not to give, if you've got an opinion about whatever you want, that's fine, you can share that outside of that meeting, but that's not the purpose of this particular meeting. Make it, provide some other forum for that, if people want to pontificate. But it, I think, you know, we're kidding ourselves if we, no matter what we do here, we're going to be impacting people. So I would, hopefully, that we won't jump, you know, say, let's don't do this because, you know, we're going to offend this group or that group or whatever. Let's keep the big picture in mind here, because with this, 18,000, it could be 20,000. The last thing I'll say, you know, you heard me say the last time, talk about the housing thing. In fact, if you go out now on 41st Street and drive on there, you will see, remember I was telling you that you'll see the signs? You now see free month, rent-free on those apartments up there. So we've already gotten to the point where what's been built, what's been built to date or it's under construction today, has already impacted the market to a point that the older units are the most, those units out there are already seeing that taking place. Then about DMC, I keep hearing about DMC. The DMC projections for growth, everybody keep in mind, is basically a constant of what happened to 20 years previously. It's growing at the same rate, and DMC's been around five years now. And guess what? We're growing at the same rate. So it's really, DMC is about predicting that the future growth is really going to be about the same. That's a good thing, because it gives us kind of a barometer that we can kind of expect, you know, that it's constant. So if we can, you know, take that into consideration with everything we're doing, then we should be able to, and you've done a great job of doing this, synthesizing, and this is not an easy thing to know. And I'd hate to see where we'd be, Kevin, without your technical expertise on this, where it would be, because a lot of this is technical, you know, and we have to separate the technical from the politics.
Yeah, I appreciate that comment, Gary, because in all reality, if we did nothing to existing buildings and just built new schools to meet our capacity, you're going to have to do the boundary adjustment. You're going to, some people are going to have to go to a different school unless you're going to have a new school with 100 kids in it. I mean, you're going to have to redraw the line, so it's going to be impossible not to make somebody unhappy. But I, and I do want to comment on your comment about if you did nothing to Lincoln, they'd be happy. I really believe, and I'm not supporting changing it to K-5, but I'm, if we did, I truly believe that those parents would support our system, even though they may not have gotten maybe what they wanted. I really think they would be supportive of our school system and not, even though something happened that may impact their child. But I just really believe that will happen. But you do have to factor in, you get too many people upset and they, you know, because, and I've said this to some students at a listening session and staff, that in a perfect world, I'd love to build 30 two-section elementary, 10 Friddell-sized middle school. I mean, I'd love to do that. But what I tell them is unfortunately, some decisions I have to make, money plays into the fact. I don't like it that it does, but it has to. And we have to keep that in mind, and, you know, we heard some great stories in those schools, are great schools, they do great things for kids. You could hear the same stories from Gibbs' parents, because, and that's a big elementary. So I just think it just shows how great a staff we have, that they really care for our children and really want them to be successful and do everything they can. So I'm, it's tough, it's a tough call for you. Our role is to try to provide you as much information. The challenge for me is, and it's not just this, but other things we do, is how do we get a better representation of our community? For those of you who've been on the board a while, if you remember in 2012, when we did some boundary changes, it wasn't until the third meeting at a particular school, ooh, wait a minute, it's impacting us. I don't know what we could do differently to communicate and encourage people to come to these community meetings. My experience has been, until I understand that it's going to impact my family, my child, I really don't pay much attention of what's going on. And I don't know how we could change that, I don't know how we could change how we communicate and encourage families to be aware. This year, we started doing videos to try to get that out, you know. The communication audit said people will spend a couple minutes watching a video more than reading a multiple-page document. So we're trying to get the word out and let them know what's going on, and encouraging people to come to those community meetings. But we're still not hearing that three. And I wouldn't say that we've had a good representation of our entire district at all three of them.
Ms. Becker.
Couple things could, well, the first thing, about the question-and-answer type meeting. The only thing that I worry about that is then kind of who becomes in charge? So is it the committee who's been meeting for, you know, weeks and months and going through all sorts of stuff? Or is it, you know, is it the people who come in, you know, kind of like you said, maybe at the last moment? And it's like, oh, holy smokes, this is going to impact me, you know, did you think about this? You know, how come you didn't think about this? And so, you know, how do we balance, you know, how do we balance that? And again, I am, you know, I'm kind of concerned about the real vocal minority, because it is really a small group, and it is when you are just affected. So those, I do have a, I don't know how I feel about those yet. But, and the other thing is with the meetings, can you, can you hold them in, you know, like, and I'm sorry, I don't know, but can you hold them in, like, each one of the high schools? Or, you know, maybe moving where you're actually holding the meeting might, I don't know, might make a difference? I don't know if it will or not, but that might, so.
Ms. Sealer.
You ready for me? So I want to talk about, to ground us a little bit, in our public input. And so some of the questions that I have about our meetings, and I think this is a great opportunity as for the task force and us to kind of look at how those things have gone and how we could maybe change to do things better. You know, have we addressed the barriers of language, transportation, childcare, and technology? Those are things that I would like the task force and the district to be mindful of. I kind of made a list of pros and cons. You know, pro was the number of people, there's a lot of people here that day. We were, you know, putting them in every crevice of the building, basically. I really appreciated the group work, even though I was up here, but I appreciate that system, I appreciate the technology. I think some of the things that weren't as successful were the expectations of the process, which, you know, may fall on some of you, but I think also falls on some of board members.
Ultimately, yes. Probably ultimately, yes.
Which I'll loop around to in just a second. I think from our point of view, in the work I've done about best practice for engagement, we can't, we can't believe that by going out to get input, we're going to know what people believe. That we really need to focus on the engagement piece, which is weighing the choices and looking for trade-offs. And then we look at those results, and we look for things of substance, not demographics. So even though, yes, I think we need more voices, it doesn't mean that if we meet with the Hispanic community, we're like, good check, we got that voice. So even though, yes, I think we need more voices, it doesn't mean that if we meet with the Hispanic community, we're like, good check, we got that voice. You know, we meet with this building, good check, we've got that voice. We really need to, to think more broadly about it. The work I've done is, is talks about not looking for consensus because that's an agreement thing, but looking for synergy and looking at alternatives and how that's gonna shape our thinking better. So when I was kind of going through all my stuff, my papers and papers and papers that everybody laughs at me about, you know, this is my little list, and now you're really gonna laugh at me. This is my list of, of terms that come out in the, in my reading. Convening, engagement, feedback, public relations, dialogue, debate, input, advice, outreach, connecting, information, involve, deliberation, advice. I, I think that part of the struggle in this process, no matter what the, the thing is, right? Whether it's boundaries or whether it's programs, I don't think that we have clearly defined what we are looking for from our community. And I think that people think if I get a hundred people to write me, write the school board a letter, the school board is gonna go, okay, we're not gonna do that. But this isn't, it's not a vote, it's not a community vote when we're getting input. And I think we really need to change how we're messaging that and how we as a board are gonna look at those pieces of information coming in. Because if it was a vote, well, all right, we're gonna take that off the list because we heard from those hundred people. But I don't think that that's the best practice way for us to look forward. I would ask the task force, when they have a next community meeting, to think about what is the goal? What are we trying to get and are we meeting that goal? I did have a little conversation with my colleague up in Bloomington because they are a good sounding board for me. Bloomington has done the same thing in recent years. She said they had a Saturday morning meeting, I think it was a couple hours, people signed up for two minutes. They had their two minutes, they spoke their piece, they got, they got that out, they got their message out. And it was, you know, that helped them kind of process. But I think when we have an open forum and somebody stands up and says, well, what the heck are all these choice programs taking up, up, up all our money for? That's not constructive to anybody. That's, that's just not helping the conversation move forward. So it might take a little bit more work to involve our community, but I think it's worth it. And I certainly think that we're all capable to do that.
I'm, I'm wondering though, I mean, we had, it seems to me, our community task force group, that was the community. That was people from all over the place, most, many of whom I'm assuming didn't have a vested interest in any particular thing, coming together and saying, this is what we think might work the best. And I, I think it was a representative group. So at this point, we, we will certainly listen more, but I'm wondering if it would be useful for us to come up with a proposal and then have the community react to that. And I think that's what Mike was talking about, just.
That's, that's what we'll do in January. That survey is kind of your proposal, whatever option would be. And then another, as, as Kevin mentioned, then here's our option, what do you think? How about if we added Churchill piece to it at this cost? How about if we added pools and blah, blah, blah at this cost? Would you support that or what is your feedback? So then you'll get all of that and hopefully it'll guide you on, well, this doesn't look like it has much support, let's throw that out. So I, I think at that time, you're gonna, I mean, it's gonna be mailed to every household in Rochester. And I, I don't remember what's the percentage of return that you normally get on those kind of surveys.
I think they said if you, if you get near ten to twelve percent, it's an extremely high return, but it's still representative of the vote that's actually gonna happen on the, on referendum day.
I mean, I, I was impressed with the fact that you began with the, what are, what are we after as a district? What are we trying to accomplish? And I think that was very clear. There have been messages that people want small schools and that's been very clear. There's a message, they're really expensive and sort of inefficient to run. But down the road, how about if we, if we have to build big schools, we'll do that, but then figure out ways we can make them feel smaller. Schools within schools or ways of rethinking how we operate so that every kid can feel like he or she is in a small school. And we can do that and we've got some time to do that. But meanwhile, I'm not sure, we want more community feedback, absolutely, but I'm not sure when and what that needs to look like at this point. And I guess just being the pragmatist, I would feel better if we said, okay, right now, we're thinking, this is maybe the direction we want to go. This is the recommendation and then get feedback on that rather than have people telling us what they've been telling us. And we got those messages already, but there hasn't been a whole lot of new information. You know, should we think farther ahead, ten years, fifteen years rather than five years? Maybe, although I think the suggestion of getting a big chunk of land southwest so we can build down the road a high school there. And in Rochester, every thirty years, we build a new high school. Century's twenty-one years old, so it's gonna be about ten years, we'll need another one. But I can't imagine being able to afford one right now. But we'd have, if we had the land for it and then that vision of elementary, middle school, high school, I, I think that's a slick model.
Well, I'll bring this up again, but this is, you know, we talked about earlier, thinking out of the box, right? Trying to think another way. Another way, you know, we've had conversations, another way to extend capacity is you change the hours of operations. You use, you know, adding an hour to the school there, kids, kids go to high school a different time. The night birds go to school at night, you know, that, and the, and the day birds go, go during, during the day. I mean, if you really want to impact our, our, our need on, or, or minimize the need for facility and, and capacity, then, you know, you could throw a question on the survey about would, what about changing the hours of operation? Would you have students, you know, throw out some different times of school? Now, that has other operational considerations, but at least you'd have the public sentiment in feeling about that as a, as a particular option as well. But, you know, that, that requires to say, well, we have to be open to the idea that, you know, we can, we can maybe have a school open for school from, you know, seven AM in the morning till seven PM at night.
Ms. Berkman.
Why accept the status quo? Look for new and better ways. I didn't say that earlier, but I think you did. One of the things I think that we've really left out of the equation in terms of what, what's good for kids and what's best for kids? And do we have to automatically assume that building smaller schools is better for kids or that it's going to cost more? I'd like to see some research on some of this stuff, like, okay, we have a school of seven hundred and twenty students. How do we give that a smaller feel? One thing that hasn't been suggested is perhaps the public might like to know if you want smaller schools, this is what it's gonna cost to build them and this is what it's gonna cost to operate them. Because right now, it's just assumed we can't do it. But let's find out if we can or can't do it. I mean, I've heard these assertions, but I haven't seen the data or the, the educational research or whatever to back that up. I mean, it's not that I don't trust people necessarily, but I think this is something that we really need. If we're gonna really let the community have some input in terms of what's possible, then why are we necessarily limiting what's possible? You know, you said, Mike, ten small middle schools, K eight schools, you know? How much would it cost, how much would it, you know, not only to build them, but to operate them and to make it work? And what might we see differently in the students that we're preparing for the future in terms of what they're able to do to contribute? Maybe we figure out that if we build more schools now that are a little different, we'll have fewer prisons later. You know, all these things tie together. And I understand the need to talk about the capacity and the square footage and what is it gonna cost? But I haven't really heard very much at all about the education and what we're trying to do for kids. And these options, to me, I have problems with them because they just really box us in. And I'm, I know what I'm gonna hear probably is, well, you know, if the task force is gonna go back and look at all of that, it's gonna cost us a whole lot more time. But I don't think that's necessarily true because if, if the research is out there, just, you know, shove it at us and we'll take a look at it.
So you, your comment about box us in, what, what is the concern about boxing you in in what manner?
Right now, we're looking at, well, we have to have schools of seven twenty. And, you know, I'm getting a whole lot more comfortable with the idea of tearing something down and building something new. I think you've, you've made a, a very credible argument for that. But, I mean, earlier, the remark was made, well, if we had a big, bigger school, instead of having a point-three mental health worker or a point-four mental health worker in a building, you know, you have more kids, you could have somebody full-time. That's not the issue. The issue is really how many medical, or how many mental health practitioners and social workers are we lacking right now? You know, maybe the answer isn't, you have a bigger building, so you put these, these pieces together. So you have these three hundred kids with a point-three and these three hundred kids with a point-four. And then you have one person serving all of these in one location. I mean, that's not addressing the problem.
Right. So, so the only, the only reason we can't answer that question or directly address it as a task force is that seven hundred and twenty student building is a five-section school based on your current class size. If the board at some point in time in the future says, you know what? The best class size is fifteen to eighteen kids at the kindergarten level and twenty to twenty-four kids at the upper grades, you've just changed that seven hundred and twenty student school without reducing the square footage down to a six hundred minus school. And so boxing you in would be building small buildings and carrying on the, the student class size that you have versus building a building with a number of classrooms so that if educational funding changes, if the, your local taxpayers change their ability or their appetite for operating referendums, then you would be able to reduce your class size by building more buildings that are five-section buildings and putting, hiring more teachers, more social workers, more, more folks like that. So the, the only way you limit yourself is by building small buildings.
Well, let me back up because earlier, five minutes ago, I said, I don't know if a small school or it, school is better or worse.
For educational outcome.
For an educational outcome or obviously for operation. But I think this is the kind of thing that the community needs to know. So that when we use that argument, if we use that argument, which I'm saying is, you know, probably a pretty good argument, that we can also say, within this group of seven hundred and twenty students, this is how we're going to make it feel small. Because right now, there are a whole lot of parents out there who are saying, my kid already gets lost in school. You know, why are we building more, bigger schools? So maybe those are some of the issues that need to be addressed is why are their kids already feeling like they're getting lost in school? So you're not necessarily looking at just why, just how do we make a smaller school feel in a, with a larger population? But I think we need to be talking about that district-wide with the schools that we already have and not just in terms of constructing new schools. But those are, I mean, those are the kinds of things that we're hearing from parents is, I like the smaller school feel. Okay, well, let's give them some ideas about how that can actually be accomplished.
Yeah, I think.
It doesn't have to be a huge production, but.
I think, as I mentioned earlier, in a perfect world, we'd have a bunch of smaller schools. And I'll go back to something that Gary said earlier. I think the largest referendum this, in this district's history was when you did Century. I think it was thirty million or thirty-one million.
Failed the first time.
Okay. Right now, just at what we're looking at our three options, anywhere from a hundred and thirty to a hundred and eighty million. You take a seven twenty building and make it two small buildings, that number's gonna continue to climb. And the reality is what, what can you really pass to what I would love to have? Unfortunately, we have to, this has to factor into our decision.
And I understand that, but wouldn't it be nice if, if the population actually knew that? I mean, you're telling them right now, but they're not getting the message yet that, you know, we would love to do that, this, but it's, it's gonna be so astronomical in cost. In other words, maybe, you know, one of the questions we could have on the survey in January is, we could do these schools at this cost, this size, give them just, you know, a brief explanation of how you would make that a smaller feel versus building your ten small middle schools and everything, which would not give you some of the advantages that a larger building would have and how much it would cost. Because then I think it would make it real clear to people how we're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place.
Yeah, I, I think those, let's not assume that the small voices that we're hearing that, that's the majority of our district. And my fear, and I've said this at our PLC meetings before, not only do we have to balance what we think we can pass, my also concern is if you come out, let's say we come out and say, hey, we want three hundred million dollars because we want to build a bunch of little schools. My fear is that are we gonna turn the voter off because, my gosh, they're greedy, look at them, they're asking for three hundred million dollars? So I think you gotta weigh that in too. Yes, if I'm that voice that says I want small schools, I'm gonna want to hear that message. But eighty percent of our tact voters do not have kids in our schools. If we flash out three hundred million dollars, how do you think they're gonna respond to that?
But isn't that the, isn't that the kind of information we are trying to collect before we come forth with a recommendation for what the referendum's gonna look like?
True, but my mind.
Why not validate it? She's just saying, why not validate what you're thinking through a survey?
Well, I, I, I think you could for some, but my fear is, I've already made my decision. Here's, they've never asked for more than thirty million dollars. Now they're asking me, would I support three hundred million or four hundred million, whatever it would be? I'm thinking, I've already made my decision about that district. That's, that's what I worry about.
But see, I wouldn't put it, I wouldn't put it as, would you, okay, three hundred million, we're pulling that out of the air, whatever the huge number is. It would be, that would not be in isolation. It would be three hundred million for blah, 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 or a hundred and fifty million for blah, blah, blah. And this is how we're going to incorporate some of how this feels and how we think education is done with these little buildings into the big, big ones. So it's not just gonna be four hundred million or three hundred million in a vacuum, but it's, it's this.
Perfectly. I just, there's some people that will make their decision based on how, what we ask on the survey versus the other stuff.
Ms. Becker.
I just think that we, that we have to be careful about projecting too much about big school, small school because you don't know what you don't know. And if you're, I had, at the same time, I had two kids at a small school and one child at a big school. I did not feel any difference between the two schools. If, if I only had kids at a small school, I would say, I would have all sorts of experiences with the small school. If I only had a child at a large school, I would only have experiences with kids at large schools. I just, I think, again, we have to step back and say, all right, what do we feel? I mean, we can, we can take input, yes. But again, we have to say, okay, I know that there's gonna be people who want small schools, people who want big schools. But our job as the board and as the committee is to look at what is going to be the best solution. It's not gonna be good for everybody, but what's gonna be the best solution that's gonna give our students the best education that we can with the money that's allowed? And so there's, you know, but I, I just think we have to be a little bit careful with, you know, with parents who are, who, you know, say, oh, my kids can't ever go to a different school. And it's like, well, okay, yeah, they can. I mean, it's, I, I, I mean, it happens.
They will once they go to middle school.
What?
They will once they go to middle school and then again in high school.
You know what, and, and, and so I, I just, I, I think we. You know what, and, and, and so, I just, I think we need to try, you know, because our job is to look at the system as a whole and say, "Okay, you know what? We just, we need to look at what we feel, you know, take all the input. We have this committee that has been meeting for months and months and months and, and, you know, trust, I don't know, I would say, trust the process."
So, is it possible for us to ask the task force, I don't know how you feel about this, to, can you come up with sort of a ballpark figure? Rebuild Bishop, rebuild Longfellow, new elementary school, new middle school with a lot of land around it, and then options? Add on to Churchill or rebuild Churchill, new swimming pool, security, and whatever else. And then come up with a ballpark for that with how much additional it would be, and then for us to look at what might be feasible in terms of referendum?
Yes.
Yep.
I think it's a good idea, Madam Chair. Also, that we're going to do, if we're going to do a survey, I would hope that we do the surveys designed in a way by experts who do survey, and that it's a statistically validated survey, so that we know that we can project that, you know, if we see trends, that's generally what we know the community as a whole is thinking, because if you do the sample right and you get the right demographics, you know, social demographic of that survey, you can, we have found when we've done those surveys, that they project out pretty, pretty, pretty good. So, I don't, I guess what I'm saying is, I don't, I wouldn't favor just doing a survey for the sake of doing the survey and then sending it out there, because doing every household, I don't know what every, every household does not even need to do a statistically validated survey, but we can certainly do that, and as long as at the end of the day, that we know we're going to get a return and a sample size that's going to be predictable, you know, statistically predictable to the community as a whole. I would hope that we put that kind of effort into the survey to make sure we get the, maximize the value of doing a survey.
That is one of the consultants that we teamed with to start with, is the group called School Perceptions, that they focus on the surveys and the things.
Selinger? No?
Yeah.
Two questions and a comment. If Montessori goes to Hoover, will Hoover get its own administrator?
Well, I, I mean, we haven't got that far into that, but my first thought is, they have one now. They would have one there running Montessori and running the preschool.
With Churchill, but how would they, would Churchill have an administrator, like, are we, would be, would be adding an administrator?
If Churchill became a seven twenty, using our staffing allocation that we did this year, they would have a principal and an associate or assistant, so, yes.
Yes.
I mean, right now, they have an assistant principal and then a principal at Hoover that can oversee Hoover and the preschool. So, we would have an administrator doing the same thing, Montessori, preschool. And then if that became a seven hundred and twenty school, according to our past practice, it would be, there'd be two administrators there.
Thank you. Other question, sort of question. Have we, has the task force or the administration thought about doing any more K-8 options?
Hopefully, yes. We, I don't know if we talked about it specifically.
In one of the first options, the group of options we presented, I believe option three had a new K-8 instead of a new middle school. What it wasn't generating is it wasn't generating enough middle school capacity.
Enough middle school capacity.
And so, because of that and because we didn't hear overwhelming support, one way or the other, for more K-8, that fell out of the options and it became just a pure middle school with the other pieces in the options.
Okay, follow-up question before my comment. If Longfellow, if the Longfellow site was increased and it stayed forty-five fifteen, could they go to K-8? Would that help us?
Well, that wouldn't, I don't think it'd increase our elementary capacity.
Yeah, you'd lose some of that elementary capacity, which, as was indicated over here, there's, you know, we're doing everything we can to increase that capacity by increasing Longfellow and then Ben Franklin, you know, increasing the capacity there by moving Montessori out. So, if you made it a K-8, you'd have to do something else to help with the K-five population in the southeast.
All right. My comment, I'm going to try and be positive. Because I'm kind of a crabby person, you guys know that, and you put up with a lot. You know, this is a very public tussle conversation and everybody's putting all their stuff out there, but, you know, there's part of me that's really trying to see this as a great opportunity. I, you know, I've shared a superintendent email, you know, "We're in a great place," and you have said that, Kevin. You know, "We are not closing buildings, we are opening buildings, that's awesome." Maybe I don't love seven twenty, but there's part of me that thinks, "Hmm, what could seven twenty look like for a twenty-first century education? You know, how could we rebuild spaces to make them more nimble, flexible, whatever the word of the day is, for our learners and our teachers?"
Right.
So, you know, as hard as this is, you know, for me personally, and I think as a board and for you guys, you know, certainly, you know, you guys aren't getting paid any bucks to take, well, leave Marlis, I don't know what you're thinking, "What the heck did I sign up for?" Thank you. You know, I just want to, I want to try to remind us that this is a really positive thing for our district and this could, you know, this is really going to set us up for long, beyond probably when we're sitting at this table or even around, right?
No question about that.
Why does everybody always look at me when you're talking about not being around?
She was looking at me. Everyone always looks at me when you talk about things that way, I'm not going to be around to see.
So, what do we want to do? And let's try to do it-
I don't think you need to make a decision tonight unless you see some drastic changes need to be made. Next, at the next meeting, I think at that time, we need to land on something. The only question I have is, do you want us to try to get another community meeting in between now and the next board meeting? Or sometime between now and before we finalize the questions on the survey?
Wasn't there one on the twentieth scheduled?
That's the task force.
Oh, that's the task force, okay.
Well, I think, if I may, minimally, Director Schluessner had suggested opening the Thought Exchange. Maybe that, prior to the next meeting, would be a, I think, a good faith gesture on the part of the district and board to say, you know, "We're still wanting you to provide input." I think that might go a long way.
I think it might be easier first to open up the existing survey, maybe not. The problem with Thought Exchange, it limits the number of questions that we can ask. But either, either way, we can open it up and continue to get feedback, I don't know.
My concern with doing that is it's, there's not going to be any scientific data identified and it's a, it's going to sound like a survey, it's going to look like a survey, but really what it is, is it's citizen feedback. So, I, I would lean more towards an event where people can come in and ask questions and get the answers versus a kind of social media type approach. They already have the venues for social media right now to, to vent, but I think the ability for them to get answers is probably more critical at this point. So, that would be my recommendation. And then during the process, we'll add another word, intercepts, where you actually go to them so that they don't have to take time out of their busy day to get feedback and kind of answer questions and provide more information in that timeframe of March to November. So, I think right now, we want to get the questions, just in case there is something that we've overlooked. You know, having a hundred thousand people look at it is better than having thirty people look at it or fifty people, however many people have been, you know, knee-deep in this. So, I think opening it up for that question session, and you're right, it's going to have to be controlled. It's, it's going to, the ground rules will have to be set and maybe there's a control to turn the mic off and that type of thing. But I think giving the opportunity to ask questions and answer questions is probably the best venue for that piece right now.
We did get some questions from the feedback already, and actually Cabinet spent some time today responding to those questions and we'll eventually get that on our website. It's already up, it's already on the website. So, the questions we did get, we did respond to those. Very similar to what we did with our operation referendum, anytime a question came up, we posted it, answered it. So, that's already on our website.
So, are all three options still on the table, Ben?
What I heard, I guess what I was going to go away with was, kind of, I heard some consensus on, for lack of a better term, what I had started with, which was option two with the question of Churchill, which basically gets it up to the option one version, and then those other needs pieces. So, my intent right now would be to put that together, package that, and have that as part of the task force discussion on the twentieth, besides the middle school boundary, get their feedback and interaction to it or their approach to it. And then that would, we would bring that information forward then in two weeks for you folks to hear the initial feedback from the task force and improvements or changes that we see based on other feedback between that time period.
Thank you. I think despite our best intent, some people have figured that that's it, it's one of those three options and there's no other possibility. And from the beginning, it's been, here are three possible options, or sort of a combination of them, and things can get tweaked. And I think that's what we're in the process of doing, so thank you.
That's a very important message to get out, too. We are listening, we are adjusting.
And we've called it three options, but I think altogether, we might be on like option nine or ten, if you look at the way we've tweaked them along the process.
At least iteration nine or ten, right?
It might not be bad to present it that way.
And I think, I think that is a really important thing to do, because I remember the first time we were going through the boundary things and we'd get the information and then we would adjust and then people would get mad and say, "But you changed everything." Well, yes, it was a response to the information that we had received. So, I think that's a very, a very critical piece to hammer home.
And Jane, if I may, offer a suggestion, and that the media has already left for the evening. Maybe the Communications Office could, we could get the jump on this and send something out to inform and present the message that I think the board is communicating tonight. Would that be something of some value?
We can do another quick video to give them an update. I did do an interview-
See, I think you're talking about a press release to, to talk about where we are and what-
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Well, I did do an interview before the meeting and kind of shared with them that no final decision be made. We're just trying to narrow down what should be on the survey, and then in January, the feedback we get from that survey will really guide the board on making that final decisions on what, how much they ask for and what will be on that cost, so. And I did, it was all three TV stations, so that should be, not sure if they'll air all of it, but we can do that.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Great job. And for those of you who are still here, you get merit badges. I was going to gabble this up, because, wishful thinking. Seven point oh one, approval of ice arena rental from the city of Rochester. This is a briefing item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, Mr. Queasley's just going to stay up here and brief us on this item.
Got my chair warmed up on a cold night, so I may as well stay here. Madam Chair, Mr. Munoz, members of the board, Ms. Edgar, before you is our yearly request for ice rental for the three high schools for the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year at approximately a cost of a hundred and twenty-five dollars per hour. And after the first of the year, it raises to a hundred, excuse me, two hundred and thirty dollars per hour. So, we do see a five dollar increase per hour after January one.
You said a hundred and twenty-five to two hundred and thirty?
Been sitting here too long. Two hundred and twenty-five currently, after January one, it goes to two hundred and thirty. Sorry.
Much better.
Thought I fumbled that one, so.
I know there's a sleep study going on. Might want to participate in.
I know, I got to get some glasses.
Yeah, get a new pair of glasses out of this here. So, again, this is a briefing item. Our girls' hockey, of course, did start this week and, excuse me, a while back, boys' hockey started this week, so we're already up and running for the winter season for us. Any questions about that?
Nothing's going to change.
Ms. Selinger.
I was just going to say, is this typical, I mean, typical increase, not much of an increase?
Yeah, last year, we did not see an increase, but this year, we are seeing a small increase in our rates, and that's pretty typical, so.
Move to action.
It's been moved and seconded to move this to action. Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? My computer's dead, can somebody else read?
Mine's dead, too. It won't, it won't pull up the-
Got it, okay. Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the rental of ice arenas for the district's athletic ice hockey program from the city of Rochester and Graham Arena at a total estimated annual cost of a hundred and eighty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars to be funded by the athletic building rental budget allocations for each high school.
On approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Queasley.
Thank you. Thanks, Mark.
Seven point oh two, acceptance of canvas of votes cast in the November sixth, twenty eighteen School Board general election. This is an action item. Wendy is so good at sharing.
Yeah.
Be it resolved.
People have trouble with their names tonight.
Place is falling apart. Everybody hold on to your nameplate. Be it resolved that Melissa Amundson, Julie Workman, Jean Marvin, and Kathy Nathan, having received the highest number of votes, are elected for your terms as follows. Melissa Amundson, seat two, term of office begins January eighth, twenty nineteen, following official acceptance of office. Julie Workman, seat four, official acceptance of office, January eighth, twenty nineteen, following... Official acceptance of office, did I just read that twice?
It's all the same for all of them.
Okay. I don't need to read that every time, do I?
Yes.
No, okay. Jean Marvin, seat five, official acceptance of office, January eighth, twenty nineteen. And Kathy Nathan, seat six, official acceptance of office, January eighth, twenty nineteen. Be it further resolved that the school district clerk is authorized to issue the certificate of election and provide said certification to county auditor of each county in which the school district is located in whole or in part.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sorry, John.
I have nothing to say you said at all, and I'm talking about this item in particular.
Who seconded it?
Who seconded it? I was switching screens, you did, okay.
Seven point oh three, approval of combined polling places. This is a briefing item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, Mr. Carlson, Executive Director of Finance, will brief us on this item, is ready to roll.
Very good, thank you Superintendent Munoz and Chair Marvin and the rest of the school board. This item is, we need to do this annually now by December thirty-first, so I thought I'd get her to you early and have it done. This just declares in advance to the county auditors where we would have our elections if we're going to combine any polling places. And we are proposing that we do that in a couple instances. Most of them are exactly the same as the county actually already combines polling places in the Rochester area. The one that's not, Wabashaw County's not doing already is the one up in Wabashaw County. We're proposing that we put Hyde Park Township, Zumbro Township, and City of Hammond all at Saint John's Lutheran Church in Hammond, just to facilitate two less polling places in Wabashaw County.
Any questions? Mr. Carlson, do you know about how many voters that affects?
No, I don't.
I was going to say, are we limiting, are we going to be limiting people's ability to get the polls, especially those that maybe don't have transportation and... And what do we say? How much does it cost us to have those other polling places?
Do you remember in twenty fifteen- Do you remember 2015 when we did the voting by ourselves? Did we combine those sites at that time?
Yes, we did. And I'm just trying to find it here.
We already done it.
Quick. From the list of registered voters on this last election day, so up in Hammond, there were 79. Hyde Park Township, there's 150, and Zumbro Township, 485. So we're impacting about 700 people and asking them to go to one place.
The one that has fewer votes than the one that has, one that had twice as many votes, one of the polling places. Hyde Park had 107.
Hyde Park had 150, Hammond had 79 registered voters, Zumbro has 485. On this last election, the number of people that voted were 34 in Hammond, 100 in Hyde Park, and 414 in Zumbro Township.
414?
414, correct.
I have a question, though. So you said these are similar to the, the county boundaries? So if we didn't combine them, would people have to go to two places to vote if we had?
Not necessarily, but we would have to find additional locations. So whereas we're proposing combining, for example, at Operating Engineers Local Number 49, we're putting Ward 1 Precinct 11 with Ward 1 Precinct 12. If we want those to be separate, we have to go find another place, because the county and the city are already combining those as they did in this election, so. This, this resolution, by the way, only matters if we have an election that's not on a statewide election day where the counties running it. We do, probably will have election next year where we will be running it by ourselves, so.
This is a briefing item.
No pressure to move this one to action. We've got two more meetings.
Okay, that's, I think that's a good thing. We're good with that? Thank you. 7.05, authorization to reimburse general fund for long-term facilities maintenance expenses. Another briefing item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, Mr. Carlson will brief us on this item as well.
On this one, this is a resolution probably should have brought on the last meeting where we approved the sale, upcoming sale of the debt we're going to issue for the Bamber Valley project. And normally, this is very normal, we just ask that we get authority to reimburse ourselves for the architect and engineer fees we've already been paying out of the general fund. So once we issue the debt, then we make the transfer and put the money back into the general fund. So again, this is something common we do on every debt issuance, we just didn't bring it forward at the last meeting.
Move to action.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to make this an action item. Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's now an action item. Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the resolution relating to the financing of a proposed project to be undertaken by the district establishing compliance with reimbursement bond regulations under the Internal Revenue Code.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Carlson. 7.06, update on the request for proposals for transportation services. Information item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, just want to give you an, an update. If you recall, we put out an RFP, two different ones. One to continue doing a two-tiered system like we're currently doing. Our contract expires at the end of this year. And then we also asked for proposals to run a one-tiered system, which would allow us to potentially put our secondary students on city buses. Unfortunately, the proposals came in extremely higher, several million dollars more than what we currently are paying. However, both proposals have a clause where we could sit down and try to negotiate with them, so this is why we're not bringing the actual cost to you yet, because we're hoping that we can do some negotiation. I will tell you, there's very little difference between a, a one-tiered and a two-tiered system as far as cost. And I know, it doesn't make sense to me, but when you're only busting fewer of our kids, but they still have to pay the drivers. They can't just pay a driver for one hour in the morning and one hour in the afternoon. They have to still pay him two hours both times in order to get drivers. Also contributing to the increase is the, they're going to pay their drivers more. I think it's to try to help them get drivers, because I know they're having shortage of drivers and this year, they're currently using drivers from Illinois that come and live here during the week and then drive home on the weekend, so. But both are extremely higher than what we're currently paying and, and we have to, we have to get them down somehow. So John and, and Scott and Jeff and I will schedule meetings with them and see if we can bring them down, down some, and then we will bring those proposals to you. But either way, it looks like our transportation costs are going to go up in the future, no matter what. So we'll have more information, but I just wanted to give you an update, because we did let you know that the RFPs were out there and done, but we want to try to bring some, bring some of that down a little bit.
Thank you.
Any respondents that you have to the RFP?
Pardon me? We had two, two companies.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz. 7.07, closed session, negotiations.
Pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 13D, Point 03, Subdivision 1, I move to go into closed session to discuss labor negotiations.
We are in recess at 10:10 PM. 10:27 PM. 7.08, ratification of the 2018-2020 Teamsters Local Maintenance Collective Bargaining Agreement. This is an action item.
Move approval. Oh, get it, read it first. I'm just.
Okay, be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby ratify the 2018-2020 Collective Bargaining Agreement between the Rochester Public Schools and the maintenance employees. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we are adjourned at 10:27 PM.